Kick off our special board of education meeting where we will swear in our new board member. Although after we swear our new board member in, there is an invitation for public comment. If you are here to make public comment about one of the agenda items on P and P or F and F, I would encourage you to wait to make public comment until we close the special meeting and then your public comment will be part of the meeting to which the agenda item you are speaking is actually occurring. So without further ado, we are going to call this meeting to order and ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for purpose of the special meeting, we do have a roll call.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Here.
Isa Hessel.
Here.
Metalesh Cotwell.
You.
Sonal Kalkarni.
Okay, we note Sonal Kalkarni will not be present tonight and Kara Benjamin will be joining us shortly. We do have a quorum and we're not voting, so it doesn't even matter. So it is my pleasure to ask our new colleague Metalesh Cotwell to stand and I will administer the oath of office.
I, Metalesh Cotwell, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Community High School District 128 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Community High School District 128. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Community High School District 128. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
So the board has administered the oath in an open board meeting and we are very pleased to welcome Mr. Cotwell to our board. Congratulations. Okay, before we adjourn, is there any public comment regarding Mr. Cotwell's appointment? Seeing none, we will have the special board meeting. Pardon me?
I move to close the special board meeting. Carmichael.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, you're adjourned. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will turn it over to the P and P chair, Don Carmichael, for the next meeting.
I'd like to call the meeting of P and P to order. We have several items on the agenda tonight, the first of which is an invitation for public comment followed by discussion. There are five items for discussion, calendar recommendation for the calendar committee, the employment employees, educational tours, course weight adjustments, the Illinois report card, summit of designation, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism, and then 2024-25 course proposals. I'll ask for future agenda items and then adjournment. So I will open to public comment. Did we hit a sign in sheet?
I believe we do have a sign in sheet.
If your name is not on the sign in sheet, that's okay. We're just gonna, it just gives us an order. I would remind you that comments are to be brief, three minutes. I will set a timer. When the timer rings, I will tell you that your three minutes are up and at that point I would ask that you finish your comment. All right. And you can state your name.
Okay, my name is Hussam Hakim and thank you for giving me the chance to talk on my behalf and my lot of friends here from, from the parents. So I have one point to make. So we attended the meeting in September where a lot of public comments happened. You have seen the emotions, you have seen all what that change or reversal of that decision means to us. Today I have one point and one point only to talk about, which I discussed during the meeting past week, Wednesday, regarding when we get in meeting with calendar committee. And that question, which I didn't get a clear answer on is, we have more than 20 schools, I know, who has, who have Jewish holidays as days off. We are, we had that for 20 years almost in our district. When I ask you why we cannot find the pathway like the other schools are doing, why we cannot find a pathway which is legal, which is, can, can, which put us out of risk, because I know that the challenge is the risk is that people will say, this is not secular agenda, this is not, this is not going goal with the, with the direction not to have religious holidays. Why we cannot find a path like the other 20 schools who has, who have Jewish holidays off? And the thing which was striking to me that it was mentioned at that meeting that other schools have Jewish holidays off, but we're the only school, the only one, who has Christian, Jews, Muslim, and possibly Hindu, which will put us at a challenge, will put us at a challenge because we're trying to accommodate the others. And I wondered about the daring mission. Are we really working with daring mission? Are we really considering every word we have there? I looked further and I found D stand for dreamer and door. And it's written there that we believe we can make a difference. But now the decision we're making is not to make a difference, just to be like the others and reverse the decision we made. Everyone was proud about the decision made four years ago after long and long of discussions and challenges. Now we believe we cannot make a difference, maybe this is the right word. We participate in change for the greater good, but now we're reversing that. We are in daring, still stand for resilient. And it's written there that we preserve through difficulties. We, thank you. We preserve for, through difficulties and overcome adversity. So what I ask you as board, really we need to find the way, not just to block. Block is easy. We just need to find the way as the rest of the 20 other schools in Illinois doing to have Jewish holidays off, not only for Jewish, not only for Muslim, but Jewish holiday, Jewish, Muslim, and Hindu, who all of them have decent kind of percentage base of the calendar committee report. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alvia Moed. I'm a sophomore here at LHS and a sixth grader at Oak Grove. And as the gentleman spoke prior, this is in regards to the fact that D 128, we currently have the Muslim and Jewish holidays off and we're moving away from that. So first of all, I wanted to point out that thank you for having these meetings. However, for the working parents who support the school, it's hard to come to all of these and the timings are getting earlier. So I think we might've had a larger turnout if the time had been a little later. Also, we need to keep in mind in the context that we may be having less turnout because for the Muslim and Jewish communities currently, this is a very difficult time for all of us. So there may have been a larger turnout also. And so regarding the current calendar, which we all know, and I know that we've talked about this at prior meetings that I've been to, but it's important to reiterate, currently based on Gregorian calendar, which is based on the Christian faith. And I just wanted to point out that if we're worried about taking holidays off because they're religious, then we have to keep in mind that Christmas is a federal holiday and conveniently winter break falls during that time. So in that sense, our Muslim and Jewish holidays, are we being penalized for not following the solar? We follow a lunar calendar, more of that, so it's not static, so it changes. So therefore, it feels like maybe being penalized by not having a static holiday off that would conveniently fall during the winter break. And if we're going to follow the operational calendar, then again, I know this has been brought up before, but we need to look at all aspects. Good Friday and Easter, well, these are usually days off. How is that possible? And again, like the excellent comments made before me, we need to move towards trying to find how this can work as opposed to saying, okay, we're worried about the, this issue and there's no way around it and let's just strike it from the calendar. Many of the measures are, most of the populations are working, companies, corporations, schools working towards adhering to DEI measures, becoming more inclusive, but this feels like it's exclusive. As we talked about before, parents and families of Jewish and Muslims faith, we have been proud to move here. We tell everybody that this is a safe place, our holidays are recognized, and unfortunately that will no longer be the case if this is passed. And we probably will see less diversity. We'll go to different schools that do seem to welcome us more. And so one of the points is that we need to think about the fact that we need to embrace DEI measures and work towards that. And, you know, we voted for our board members because we feel like you all support our values. And then moving to data, data is really important as a physician, I understand this and as a scientist. The survey we've mentioned before, I heard it was only a 33% response rate. I saw this survey come in. I feel like it would have been great to say this is a very, very important survey and it will change your responses has a very important, significant impact on the operational calendar. So, you know, usually, in my understanding is, to be an effective survey, we should at least have a majority of 50% response rate. So could we have missed many families that might have answered differently where we could meet the threshold, where we could say, okay, we have a sizable Muslim and Jewish population. That's possible, but we won't know if we don't do the survey again. So I have two asks. One, I would like to recommend that we redo the survey where the importance of the survey is stressed and that this could impact significantly the calendar and we should aim for a higher response rate. And the second is, for now, I would recommend that we hold on making this decision until we have more data and we analyze that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for taking our comments tonight. My name is Ahmed Eder. Hopefully some of you remember me from the September meeting. And I want to say reflecting on the last couple of months, I spoke on a similar podium in Vernon Hills High School in September and then I had an interaction through emails with Dr. Kay and Dr. Herman on the public announcements in Libertyville High School regarding the global events. And then we attended the listening session for the calendar committee recommendation a week ago and here we are today. And reflecting on all of that, I think this is very revealing. It's revealing for all of you to know what we stand for and what we believe in and what's important for us, but honestly, it's also very revealing for us to understand what the board stands for. So I want all of us to use all of these events and the intensive interactions we're having to actually expose what everyone really stands for. So I'm not going to repeat a lot of the stuff that has been mentioned. I want to actually be very pragmatic, very practical. I mentioned an alternative solution to Mr. Varn and Dr. Herman at the listening session. I also sent it by email and I'm going to outline it tonight for the board and the committee recommendation, consideration. So I understand that the school's drive to ensure that there is a secular reason to taking any day off and I absolutely understand that under the establishment clause of the First Amendment. But I also understand that under the establishment clause, there is flexibility for you how they define a threshold for taking a day off. So the whole premise of setting 25% attendance for determining days off, which is really the core of the calendar committee recommendation, is really unjustified by being legal or illegal. There's a lot of room for flexibility if you want to be inclusive to play with that threshold. My proposal specifically, set a threshold at 10 or 12%, which should be equivalent to the threshold you have for, for staff, 12% attendance, sorry, 12% absence or 10% absence. You have a baseline of 6% average absence per school day, pair the data we saw from the calendar committee. This means that if you have four to six percent additional planned absences on a given day, you know that for that day, you're going to have 10 to 12% absence to it. There is nothing really in the establishment clause or the First Amendment that prevents you from setting that as a district as a threshold for taking the day off. Second, determine the number of days per school calendar that you can afford to take off. And this is something I was surprised we didn't see in the calendar committee recommendation. I don't know how many days we can accommodate while also being, following the Illinois School of Board Education in terms of the number of maximum days that can be taken off. So that needs to be very clear. Is it four days, five days, six days on top of what's already federal holidays? So once you know that number, send out a survey, I'm almost done, send out a survey that is really religion agnostic. Forget about religions, being completely fair to religion, non-religion. Ask students at the beginning of the year, mention or indicate one day, you know, you're going to be taking off this coming year for personal or cultural reasons. Put the religion aside, get that estimate, pick the first three, four, five days, depending on the maximum number of days you've identified, say, okay, these three days, we have the majority or the top number of students who have indicated they will be absent, which means we will have at least 10% absence. We don't care what the religion is, but these are the top three days. This is something you can defend in court that is not in violation of the establishment clause, but at the same time is built based on the student feedback on when they would be absent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are the only names that we have on the list. Of course, all of you are welcome to speak if you wish to. So if you would like, you may step up to the microphone, say your name and address Do you wish to address the board? If there aren't any others, we will move on to the next agenda item. Okay, for discussion, item 3A, the calendar recommendations and D 128 calendar creation guidance and implementation procedures.
I came to the podium so that I can play the role of a presenter from the calendar committee. Dr. Yosinia Sanchez could not be here this evening, so I am presenting in her stead as one of the co-chairs of the committee. Also as superintendent, knowing the political and the cultural and the multi-dimensional nature of this agenda item, I wanted to make sure that my voice accompanied all the information that we're going to be considering tonight. Next slide. So the first thing that I want to do is recognize the 30-plus people who have served on our calendar committee. We have a district office folks, but the majority of people who serve on this committee are staff members, administrators, paraeducators, teachers, our athletic directors from both buildings. So these are people who have served on this committee for many of them, many years, and typically these people meet twice a year. So again, we want to note that it's a very comprehensive set of voices at the table. Next slide. However, rather than meeting two times per year, which they did last fall and made a recommendation, based on some requests that we had that came to us, the calendar committee added six additional meetings in the last six months. So starting in March of 2023 and concluding most recently October 18th, 2023, the committee has put forth enormous effort to consider the research and the legal information that we've brought to bear. They also have made sure that they have considered many, many options. So what you see coming to the committee, excuse me, coming to the board right now represents a lot of ideas distilled down to what we think is the best recommendation. Some of the things that parents and other members from the audience at the last meeting and tonight have suggested we consider were considered by the committee. So I think it's important that although many of the ideas that were generated were considered, what you'll see before you is the committee's best thinking. Next slide. One of the most important things for me to start with, in the past, many of the decisions made by the calendar committee have been very technical in nature. How do we take a certain set of days and plug them into a calendar that has moderate constraints? And there have been a few years where it's been a little sensitive, but there has been very little controversy and/or very little adaptive kinds of issues that have accompanied these recommendations. This year is different. This year, it is not simply a technical recommendation. What I have up there is what I continue to feel from when we started these dialogues in the spring to where we are now is a polarity. And a polarity doesn't necessarily mean that they're opposing, it means two things that can be true at the same time. And sometimes they're pushing towards each other and sometimes they're pulling away, but it's two ideas that we know can be true and how can we balance out the needs of each? So one of those is our commitment to diversity and inclusion and making sure that every student and every family feels welcomed in our district. The other is the, the need to comply with state, federal, and local laws. As we saw in Mr. Cotwell's swearing in ceremony, every board member agrees that the votes that they will take, the work we will do, will be aligned with state and federal laws. As an administrator in the state of Illinois, I also am obliged to bring recommendations to the board that are aligned with state and federal laws. So both of these issues that are influencing our recommendation are extremely important and we're making sure that we're bringing both to you. Next slide. So just to remind everyone what brought us to this place right now, last November, we received a request to add an additional non-attendance day for a holiday. And the board members, again, knowing at the time that this was something we were doing in good faith, considering adding non-attendance days for the purpose of a group's religious practice, asked the calendar committee to reconvene, knowing that we have Hindu faith, we have Greek Orthodox, we have other growing populations of religious practice in our ever-growing diverse community, and the board asked for additional criteria. So should additional requests come forward, we would be prepared. So the calendar committee reconvened in March of 2023 and began the exploration of what might additional criteria look like? What could be additional things we consider as we schedule non-attendance days? Next slide. So the first thing we did is we made sure we were very clear on our current calendar criteria. We had some very clear required ones. It has to be aligned with our collective bargaining agreement. It also, things that were set in, were agreed upon previously in precedent sending is that we end the semester one prior to winter break and that we end semester two prior to Memorial Day. And the other fourth one, again, is going back to that legal complying with state and federal laws. And at the time, we felt all of our recommendations to that point were in compliance. The other things that we need to consider that have a little bit more flexibility are to align our start date as closely as possible with our sender or feeder districts. And again, families let us know that that's very important to them. Another would be to account for new staff orientation. Our calendar does include two teacher institute days in the official calendar, but we also make sure that we set aside time before school to welcome all of our new staff and make sure that they have the support they need to be successful. We also look to the Lake County ROE and its calendar when we look at the starting and ending dates for winter break and for spring break, because many of our teachers live in adjacent school districts. And so we always try to say, let's be as consistent as possible so we have shared vacation dates for students and staff. We also work to try and balance the length of the semesters. Many of our classes are year-long classes, but some of them only meet semester one or only meet semester two. So we try to have that very close in the balance of semester one and semester two dates. And finally, we have had additional things when requested to consider adding non-attendance days in addition to those. And options for those change from year to year. Sometimes, as in the past, we've had non-attendance days that were aligned with religious holidays. Sometimes some of them fell on the weekend in which they wouldn't need to be added to the calendar. And in the past, sometimes they fell on a school day and they would be added on the calendar. So that is why that has fluctuated from year to year. Okay, so that is what we were clear on at the start, what were our existing criteria. Next slide. But we knew that we needed to consider additional information, especially when considering what might help us with those non-attendance days. So we first looked to Illinois School Code and where it states that the district must establish that a school closure is warranted based on an operational need or educational interest. And that sounded different than what we had imagined it saying. And we thought about, okay, maybe the second part would help us be a little more clear on non-attendance days. It went on to say that each of those, anytime we close school, it needs to be connected to the likelihood that high absence rates for students and/or staff would operate, would improve. for students and/or staff would operate, would impact the operation of the school. So the school code really did not give any leeway or suggested criteria for the option of taking non-attendance days for the purpose of religious holidays. So we knew that that really wasn't a source for us to look for additional criteria. Next slide. So we also said we know some of our neighboring school districts also have non-attendance days on their calendars. So we did a survey of many of the school districts in the north suburban Chicagoland area and noticed that of those schools, some do have Jewish holidays as non-attendance days, but not all. And when we looked at the data, next slide, we saw, and when we reached out to many of the districts who do include Jewish holidays on their calendar, so Stevenson District 113, several of the other districts that we reached out to, they do include Jewish holidays on their calendars because they have a high percentage of their staff who are, who will be taking those days as holidays, as in Illinois, as in the United States. Everyone has the right to take off a day of work to practice their religion. So in the districts that are currently listed there, the reason when we contacted them that they gave for including the non-attendance days was for student and/or staff absences. We were not able to find any of those districts that have a published, clear criteria. That is not something, and that is something that many of them said they were reluctant to do, that they were using patterns of previous attendance data and also informal conversations with their staff about if they were planning to take holidays off or not. Of the schools that did not have Jewish holidays on their calendar, there were a few that have recently made the transition who previously did have Jewish holidays on their calendar, but because their student and staff demographics are changing so rapidly, they no longer had the data to justify having those as non-attendance days. So one of those being Niles Township High School District 219, who traditionally has had a very high Jewish and Christian population. And over the last 25 years, the community has become more and more and more diverse, and their teaching faculty has become more and more and more diverse. So as that happens, you no longer have an operational reason to document having the non-attendance day. So I believe it was four or five years ago that Niles made this decision to go from a calendar that had a non-attendance day for Jewish holidays to not having any. And their data showed that they did not even have Good Friday, that they were so pluralistic in their religious views that no one group rose to having enough people who would be absent that it would warrant canceling school. Next slide. So we have this information, but how some of these things play out, it's not like it was linear, like we had all that information and chop, 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 it went through the committee. When you're working with a group of people and when you're trying to reach consensus, sometimes you take a step forward and take a step back. So at the very first meeting in March, when we were looking at our original criteria, we assumed those original criteria we had been using were illegal and good to go. So one of the very first outcomes was, let's continue observing the religious holidays and see how we can add to Valley. Because again, our assumption at the time is that our previous practice was aligned with state and federal law. Then at the April meeting, we realized from looking more closely at school code that we needed to have operational reasons, that it could not purely be for religious reasons. And so the team started to generate what might be some attendance data that would help us clarify what those thresholds might be. And in May, they settled on the first set of attendance thresholds that were presented to the board. So we went from in March, having an assumption that our previous practice was aligned with both our value for diversity and state and federal laws. But by the time we got to May and we were presenting those first set of criteria to the board, there were many more questions that were emerging. And even the board said, we think we need more data on this. And so that was a charge to the board to say, if we're going to consider making a change in our attendance thresholds or adding criteria, please bring us more information. Next slide. So we did. Over the summer, we added a question to the registration form. Every family must complete a registration form. That is where you update any of your home address or emergency contact. It's also where you pay your fees. When we consulted with our attorney, we can ask that question of all families, which we did. And we also put a very good introduction to it, saying, please complete this survey. The results will be used by the calendar committee to help determine future calendars. But we can't require that question to be answered. We can simply say, this would be very helpful data for us as a public school. We cannot compel anyone to share with us if they have a religion and what that religion is. So following the August 30th meeting, where we realized that the data we collected from families could potentially jeopardize what we had previously recognized as holidays, being the two Jewish High Holy Days and Eid that we recently added in 2019, we said we need more information. And so we immediately contacted our attorney and said, this is going a few steps past what we had imagined, and we need your advice. So at the September 27th meeting, our attorney sat in for over an hour and answered all sorts of questions. Many of the same questions that had been posed by people in the audience about, why can't 10% work? Why can't 15% work? And the attorney walked through all of the legal arguments that would, we would be facing in a court of law if this were to be challenged and how the committee needed to understand what the real parameters were. We brought all this information back to the committee on October 18th, again, noting the legal implications and our desire to try and value diversity. One of the things that we were challenged with is that in the past, we had signaled that we value different religions by connecting that to a non-attendance day. That was one way that we communicated the value of a religion. That is not, according to our attorney, the role of a public school. The role of a public school is to allow students to practice, but not to promote its practice. And that's where both our general attorney, as well as the second opinion that we received from a completely different firm, both gave us that recommendation. Next slide. So one of the commenters tonight did talk about the Establishment Clause. That is one of the federal laws that guides the practice of public schools in the United States, saying that we do, we are obliged to make sure every person can celebrate and practice their religion. We simply can't align our calendar or our decisions to promoting that being the case. So we need to stay neutral on this particular issue, and our calendar needs to be neutral on this issue. Next slide. So again, here's a summary of the legal advice. And again, this was from our current firms, Heims and Petrea. And we also got a completely neutral second opinion from another attorney whose opinion we shared with the board and was nearly identical to that. Next slide. When asked what might be possible exposures, because again, people on this committee were trying to find every way possible to continue to celebrate and recognize the holidays. They were asking our attorney, but what if, what if the board continues to do this? And the answer was, if we continue this practice or expand it, we would be facing potential legal and financial challenges. So one of the things that he gave as a directive is that the Board of Education should be prepared to articulate any non-attendance day that we schedule, why we warranted its closing. Okay, so next slide. So that is one of the things that the committee said, this is what we need to do. So the thresholds that the committee set were at least 88% of staff be in attendance on any given day or at least 75% of the students at each school. Meaning if one school had less than 75, we would go ahead. It wasn't both, because we definitely are a district. And so to give you some more background on where those numbers came from, I'm going to invite up to the microphone Mr. Larry Varn, who was another co-chair of the calendar committee.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. And so we want to explore where these thresholds come from and how we came up with these numbers as a committee. So the first part of our thresholds is around the staff attendance. Do we have enough instructional as well as support staff present to have a productive instructional day and maintain the integrity of our instructional practices as well as promote safety and security in our building? And so to decide this number, we considered several things. The first is adequate sub-coverage for instructional staff. Do we have enough substitute teachers or other means of covering classes in order to ensure that students do not have to combine classes in large spaces, such as auditoriums or gyms, in order to have sub-coverage? We also considered the number of safety staff members that needed to be present in the building in order to secure and provide a safe environment for our staff and students throughout the building. And finally, we considered how many educational support personnel members needed to be present in order to support the full operation of our building. We determined that at least 88% of staff members district-wide needed to indicate that they would be present for school. Anything above 12% would require us to make those, those changes that are challenging in order to preserve the integrity of our educational environment. And so when we asked our staff to indicate to us what religious holidays they would use a religious absence to observe, the top holidays that surfaced are located here. And with our threshold of 12%, the holiday aligned with a non-attendance day that would meet our threshold is Good Friday, with 57% of our staff members reporting that they would be absent. This allows us to be able to determine that we are not observing Good Friday as a religious holiday solely. We are observing a non-attendance day because it prevents us from having normal operations of our school based on the high absentee rate of our staff members on those days. Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid, and Avoli did not meet the 12% threshold and therefore would not, we would not be able to articulate a reason other than solely based on religious purposes for us observing a non-attendance day. And then the second threshold was considering how many students need to be present at each school. We looked at state requirements. In Illinois, the state requires us to have at least 50% of students must be present in order for us to count the attendance. The state that we found with the highest threshold was Michigan. Michigan requires 75% of students to be in school in order for them to count that day. Although we do not live in or reside in the state of Michigan, we felt that this indicator would allow us to have a point of reference of another government, public government entity that we can say 75% is that number. This is, this was updated from the previous recommendations that we presented to you, where we had identified 60% of students. A second reason why we identified 75% was based on the historical student attendance data. When we are going to be asked to articulate reasons why we've identified 75%, we needed strong empirical data. And so we looked at our highest days of student absenteeism. And we've identified three days over the course of the school year where our average daily attendance falls below our normal average attendance rate. Those three days are typically the day after prom, the day before spring break, and the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And for the last, for four of the last five years, we've collected this data. We've excluded 2020 because that, because of the closure due to the pandemic. And so what we found is that over the course of these three days, the lowest day actually is the day after prom, traditionally. Last year was an anomaly at Libertyville High School because the prom was later in the year. And the day after prom actually was an exemption day for seniors. It was past the last day for seniors. So seniors' last day was that Friday. The prom occurred that Saturday. Seniors were not required to be in school on that Monday. So that year was an anomaly, but in years where the prom does fall within the school year and seniors are expected to attend school the day after, we see the similar trends. But Vernon Hills Prom was earlier in the year last year, and we saw, yes, that trend continues. This is the highest absentee, absenteeism for students throughout the year. And we still operate school on this day. So if we were, if we had to provide a legal reason as to how we came up with 75%, we could not come up with a number any higher than 75% or any lower than 25% of students being absent because we have demonstrated the ability to operate school at that rate already. And so when we applied the, when we applied the thresholds to our data that we collected, we surveyed families in several ways. The first was through the collection during the registration process. We also sent out emails for families to complete the survey, and we provided opportunities during open house in person for families to complete the survey. We had 1,275 families to complete the survey. While our district has about 3,300 students enrolled, when we look at that data based on families, because some families have multiple children enrolled in our district, we have approximately 2,714 families in the D128, in the D128 district. Of those families, when we disaggregate the data that way, 47% of our families responded to our calendar input survey. And of those families that responded, we found that these were the highest rated days that families reported that their student would be absent from school to observe a religious holiday. There are other religious holidays included that were not as sizable as these, but still, we do have families that observe various religious religions in our community. They just didn't rise to, to this level of participation. And based on these numbers, Good Friday for our families is the only religious holiday that more than 25% of our families said their child would be absent from school in order to participate in a religious observance.
Now I'll turn it over to Brian Kelly for the application of this criteria to our operational calendar.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Dr. Herman. So as we look at what our recommendation for the calendar for the 2425 year, again, last year about this time, the board adopted proposal for the 2425. And as And as has been our practice, we proposed two years of the calendar. So, we are relooking at twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. And our recommendation is to start with our institute days, August eighth and ninth, which is a Thursday, and then come with our students on that Monday, August twelfth. And again, this calendar and the recommendation for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar is based off of the criteria that we discussed earlier. Dr. Herman talked about the requirement of the alignment, you know, looking at the end of the semester, looking at the beginning of the school year, other considerations, balancing with Lake County Regional Office of Education, balancing the semesters, and then also the attendance thresholds that Larry Varn talked about. So, this incorporates all of those considerations into the calendar. When we go through the first semester, then, we recommend taking Labor Day off. October eleventh would be a full-day teacher institute, Friday of October eleventh. This actually matches up with the Lake County ROE recommendation for Institute Day. So, if Lake County decides to do some staff development, staff professional learning, that we are alignment with them and we're able to partner with Lake County Regional Office of Education. November fifth is Election Day. So, in twenty-twenty-four, it's a law that we have to take Election Day off. November twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth is the Thanksgiving break. And then, first semester ending on December twentieth with our grading day. December nineteenth actually is the last day for students. And the twentieth is the grading day. Then, we take two weeks for winter break and resume with classes on Monday, January sixth. Martin Luther King Junior Day on January twentieth. Again, a full-day teacher institute on Friday, February fourteenth, which aligns with the recommendation from Lake County Regional Office of Education. President's Day on February seventeenth. And then, our spring break again lines with the Lake County Regional Office of Education. Recommendation, Good Friday, as Larry Varn talked about, is the non-attendance day, Friday, April eighteenth. And then, grading day would be on Friday, May twenty-third, with the students' last day being the day before on May twenty-second. So, that's our recommendation that was included in the board packet online. So, then, at the same time, we are proposing for twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. We'll come back next fall, revisit this calendar to ensure that it fits all of the criteria that we've discussed. And part of this criteria that we discussed before is aligning with the Lake County Regional Office of Education. We don't have all of their recommended dates yet. We are going based off of the history of when spring break falls, when their Institute Day for teachers. So, if they come out with a recommendation later this winter or early next year, we may have to revisit and adjust those days. But I'll walk through it again on what our recommendation is. Again, two days of our teacher institute, Thursday, August seventh, Friday, August eighth, starting with classes on Monday, August eleventh, Labor Day on September first, full day of teacher institute on October tenth, no attendance for students. And then, Monday, October thirteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Day, with the schools being closed. Thanksgiving break, November twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. Grading day again is the last day for teachers, the nineteenth. Students would be ending on December eighteenth. Two weeks for winter break. Classes resuming on Monday, January fifth. Martin Luther King Day on January nineteenth. And again, February thirteenth, we're anticipating would be the Lake County ROE Institute Day, February sixteenth being President's Day, closed on that day. And then, spring break, March twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. April third is Good Friday with a non-attendance day. And then, ending with school on May twenty-second with grading day, the twenty-first being the last day for students. So, that's our recommendation for the next two years. Some other things, though, to consider. We need to look at our board policy. We talked about the federal law and then also state law. But our board policy says in seven-eighty, release time for religious instruction. So, a student shall be released from school as an excused absence because of religious reasons, including to observe religious holiday for religious instruction or because a student's religion forbids secular activity on a particular day or time of day. The student's parents' guardian must give written notice to the building principal or designate prior to the student's anticipated absence. So, we already have board policy. We also have this language in our student handbook. And so, the question is, how do we then put that into practice? And so, one of the things that, you know, we do value our students to practice their religious beliefs with their family. And so, we believe that having accommodations, instructional accommodations for our student absences for practicing religious beliefs will be very helpful. Again, we will look at teachers must avoid scheduling of major unit assessments, midterm, final exam, full-period assessments, projects, presentation, or summative experiences. Teachers will offer opportunities to take quizzes before the absence. If an assessment is scheduled for the day that the student has to return to school, they should receive at least one day to prepare for the test. Students who are observing a religious holiday must have an equivalent opportunity to make up any missed assignments. And teachers will provide any assignments and resources to support the students' learning forty-eight hours prior to the scheduled absence. So, again, with, you know, notice, then our teachers can help prepare. And looking at that, you know, I think, again, in valuing our students, we're going to continue to work with our community, our religious leaders, looking at these instructional accommodations and also make our staff aware of these days and keep them educated of the needs of our religious groups. The other consideration is for extracurricular accommodations on, you know, days. So, we will look at a shorter list of observations that may impact attendance. And again, these go back also to the educational accommodations. So, again, we'll try to, we will, we must avoid scheduling tryouts, athletic contests, music performances, special events such as assemblies, field trips, and back-to-school nights. And again, you're looking at those huge things that cannot be made up. And so, we will avoid on those days, scheduling those. Practices and rehearsals, however, may be scheduled on these days, but no student shall be penalized in any manner due to their absence. And so, these are our extracurricular accommodations. And so, looking at our list, the list of observances that may impact attendance, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid al-Fitr, Eid al-Adha, and Diwali. And again, we will look and review this list every three years and revise it, you know, based off of our student attendance data. You know, again, going to our staff, especially those that are sponsors, coaches, they do have a smaller group sometimes. And so, they may, they may have other days that affect them. And we'll, again, continue to educate them. I think our equity coordinators in both buildings and our director of equity, Larry Varn, do an excellent job of sending out monthly newsletters of all the upcoming days, whether they're religious days or other days that may affect our students and families. And we'll continue to educate our families. And that concludes.
So, yeah, that concludes our presentation, and we would be happy to answer any board questions that might be helpful as you discuss the information we've shared.
I have one question, actually, a pair of questions. A lot of this information was gathered during the registration process. Will that continue with future registration each year so that we have an updated set of data?
I think we are committed to trying to gather as much data as we can to inform these criteria. But again, we can't require families to answer it.
I'm just thinking if the, as the community evolves, if there's, you know, particular thresholds that we then cross. So, that leads me to the second question. Since registration happens typically in the springtime, will we have an opportunity to revisit the proposed calendar for the coming year? Would we have enough time or would that have to wait until the year following?
So, what we are recommending is approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, so next year's calendar. And we are then sending a draft of the following year's calendar, knowing state laws sometimes change. And like we said, ROE might make an adjustment. So, we're asking for final approval for twenty-four, twenty-five and tentative approval to twenty-five, twenty-six. So, should we have any major changes in our student attendance data or other information, we would bring that back to consider for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year next. And that would be next fall.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I may kind of be evaluating as I go down my list because some of them came up in the presentation. Just want to make clear, so I understand, Good Friday is not a federally mandated holiday in the same way that, say, Christmas is. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, Christmas is a state legal.
I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. It is a state-mandated holiday. Thank you. In, is there a scenario in which we can look at holidays year to year in terms of how they fall on the calendar? So, like, for instance, I know, I believe, based on our prior conversations, twenty-four, twenty-five is exceptionally difficult because all five of these holidays fall on school days. But there are going to be some years certainly where that may not be the case. And so, in those years, you try to accommodate as many holidays as possible. If they happen to fall, if some happen to fall on weekends and say, let's say, of those five, two fall on weekends, now we only have to accommodate for three of these holidays, right? And I know we go back to the surveys and the, what's the word I'm looking for? The percentage of staff that may not be available. But as kind of a compromise to this, is there a way that we can look at this year to year and say, it's not going to work out, say, in twenty-four, twenty-five. But in twenty-five, twenty-six, there may be room to take X, Y, and Z holidays. The following year, though, it's not going to happen that way, and we're going to have to go back to this operational calendar. I know that would be a lot of moving parts and asking our committee to look at things, you know, involving a lot of detail and planning. But I think that's, that's what they're charged to do anyhow. And so, I'm just curious if that's a possibility.
I'll go ahead and answer that. And there are other people who were in the room when our attorney answered that exact same question. So, just to repeat and clarify, what if we were to say not all five fit, but two or three of them might? Our attorney gave us a few different ways that could continue to be challenged. The first way is that it would still be basing a non-attendance day and aligning it with a religious holiday rather than any other date that actually has higher student absences. It's not operational. The second reason would be, so, we currently have requests from four religions that are seeking non-attendance days. That doesn't mean that any other religion would have the legal authority to then request their day off too. And so, that could be Greek Orthodox, that could be Wiccan, that could be many, many, there's over three hundred religions that are documented by the International Religion Organization that we use to build our survey off of. So, because it would still be, again, the, he said, what? Because we said that, why can't we just put Rosh Hashanah on a teacher institute day? And he's like, well, why not Diwali? And why not this? And why not that? And when really is the best time for a teacher institute day? And why did you happen to align it with a religious celebration? And so, again, many people in the committee were trying to propose what-ifs to find that happy medium. And what our attorney kept bringing back to us is that this is a case where the legal clarity around public schools not endorsing any observance of a religious holiday based solely on religion, we could not find a place where the data would allow us to consider any of the other dates.
So, the data every time will, the supporting data would allow us to do this legally. But if the data doesn't align, there's no way to do this legally.
Correct. And maybe two examples, again, to other districts who have had a journey similar. So, that would be the situation that Niles District experienced, where they traditionally had celebrated the Jewish holidays for many, many, many years. And as their school population and staff population became more and more and more diverse, they realized that they didn't have any one religion that rose to the level of being enough to impact its operation. So, that's why their school board approved, no, they didn't have a threshold for even Good Friday. Lake Forest, the district to our east, about four years ago, also adopted a calendar based on operational needs. And the very first year, their projected attendance data, they thought they would be able to hold school on Good Friday. And so, the board did approve a calendar with no school on any religious holidays. But what they found that first year was that the absent rates for teachers and staff was much higher than they had predicted. And they had to collapse classes and they had to do triple duty. And so, using that data, they brought it back. And in subsequent calendars, the Lake Forest calendar now includes Good Friday because of attendance reasons, not because of religious reasons.
First of all, I want to thank the committee. I joined the committee somewhat in the eleventh hour, so I was only able to see two of the meetings. And I would like to reiterate and thank you for pointing out the collective work on all of the people to try to continue the traditions that we have set in the last four years, twenty to the last four years with Eid, the creative solutions and the questions that came out, the absolute intention to try to continue it. And it was this cyclical. And we thought we got to a place where, okay, this might work. And then, it came back down to, we don't have the data to support a challenge when we can show that our school is operational with seventy-two percent student attendance to continue this tradition. And we would be defenseless if we were challenged. I feel like, as in the board, we are stuck in this impossible decision to continue our model of good intentions, knowing that inevitably, we're going to be faced with this situation again because there's going to be another student advocacy group that's going to be asking for another recognition of a holiday. And if we were to deny them, we, again, are unconstitutional because we can't possibly be equitable for all of them. And it's, we all, I know we all want to continue because recognizing these holidays as a non-attendance day has somehow, has equated our value, even though I don't think that's where our value for our religions, for our student religions are. We want our students to meaningfully engage in their religious holidays, whatever that is. But we are stuck with, are we in conflict with the law? And I appreciate your diagram because both of these things are true. We, we do want our students to meaningfully participate in their religions. But we also have a responsibility to be in compliance with the law. And they are in polarity. So, my questions are, and you answered several of them. When we question our survey protocols and our procedures, that our stakeholders might not have adequately understood. that our stakeholders might not have adequately understood the severity of what they were answering or the important significance of what they were answering, is it, do you think the committee would want to send the survey out again? Now that we've had these conversations, do you think that would change what the recommendations would be? I know Lake Forest, and my other question was, in an effort of equity, if we were to, I, I'm struck with the Good Friday, because we either have metrics or we don't, right? But in an effort to show equitable solutions, and because we don't really have attendance data for Good Friday, because we've been out, do, would the committee want to consider making 2425 a baseline year and do this based on actual attendance? So that, I don't know if that's something the committee would even consider. If, we feel like the data that we have collected is pretty reliable. And with 57% absence of teachers, it clearly meets our threat, our criteria and our metrics. So again, it's kind of another pull.
Well, you were there for the committee conversations, and I think that the committee was doing its best to say, here's numerics that we think thresholds that could withstand a legal challenge, and here's what that would look like for 24 and 25. I think that what the board ends up adopting, you have the authority to make some adjustments as you see fit. I think if you asked the committee to meet up again, I think they would consider it. But there's really no new information that would necessarily change what the committee has access to right now. And in terms of redoing the survey, we are committed to continuing this particular survey annually. But I, I, I don't know, because we tried three different ways to gather the data. It was through the registration, through a separate email, and in person. I think we have shown a very good faith effort to try and get a very high response rate. And I know it, you know, 47% doesn't seem like a lot, but for an optional survey, it is extremely high. It is an extremely high return rate, one of the highest we've ever had for any kind of parent participation in a survey.
One of the other things I had a question on is, you know, because Good Friday and Rosh Hashan on Yom Kippur have traditionally been non-attendance days. We haven't really talked about the cost, because our teachers are going to have the ability to use those as religious holidays. Have we thought about as a part of our metrics, the additional cost? Because those teachers are now going to have free day, you know, they, they will not be penalized by a sick day or a personal day. So what would the cost of the district be in losing that day from teacher's benefits as well as paying for a substitute? I mean, could that be considered a part of our metrics when deciding non-attendance days?
Dan is our policy wonk, but as I, as you asked that question, I was thinking it, thinking about a response. I think, like many government mandates and policies that are approved, we're expected to implement the policy regardless of the cost. So for example, we have some staff members who might be taking off other religious holidays that they have the right to do, but we don't put that into our budget. And it's, to be clear, some school districts and some employers require staff members to use their sick days or their personal days. That is not something that our district does. Our district allocates three, up to three additional days. And that is just part of how we do business. So we have not really thought to put that into any calculus.
Any other comments?
So one question regarding the registration survey, right? You mentioned that if the registration survey shows us data that the non-attendance days are trending towards other metrics, we would consider that in the following year? One suggestion to the calendar committee is to revisit that, just because you're trying to look at the registration data for the upcoming year, and the data is reflecting what they are looking at for the next year and not a year in advance. So it might be something from a data standpoint to look at it, so that even from when you're looking at the balance for legal challenges, right? That would be the basis, because you're basing that year's school calendar on data collected for that year, because your registration data is very specific to the next year. It might change from year to year, and from a challenge perspective, that might change our opinion or that might change a legal opinion also. So considering the sources of data might be valuable there. I, I, I like the highly data-driven approach, because that feeds, you know, decision-making much more than other sources. But I, I, at least then this keeps our data current and allows us to make decisions that way.
I think that's a very good point. One of the challenges we face is needing to set our calendar typically, actually, it's typically approved last meeting in October or November. And that is because so many other things on the district calendar hinge upon our starting and ending date and things like that. So the athletic directors and the student activities directors and other people who serve on that committee know, once that calendar is adopted officially, lots of other decisions are made based on that, as do our families. We get phone calls regularly saying, when is the adopted calendar going to be published? Because we are trying to make a decision about a family vacation or trying to make a decision about something else. And so while we would want to get the data as close as possible to the students we're serving, there are many situations in which we are making decisions on next year based on data that's one and two years old, because that's when it's clean and reliable.
One thing I did want to say about the, the survey. I heard a lot of comments through different meetings about the priorities that were asked by the parents. What is the parents' priorities? And I know why we're using them, because I know they need to align with the future schools. But I think in this instance, when we're talking about holidays, it's, it's somewhat of a disingenuous question, because it really doesn't matter. I mean, if we're talking about a strict operational calendar based on constitutionality, it doesn't matter if we put two weeks on the front or two weeks on the end. It doesn't matter how many days. The argument becomes, if we do not have substantiating, substantiating metrics underlying every decision we make on a non-attendance day that is not strictly based on observing a religious holiday, we fail. So asking parents their priority of whether they want the, you know, we all want finals before winter break. We all want to be, you know, but it's a disingenuous question based on this. And I wouldn't, it muddies the argument. It muddies the, you know, the conversation. So I would not include that on future surveys based on holiday observance.
I could not agree with you more. That survey was authored at the beginning of June, and we tried to get it into the registration material so we could maximize the return rate for parents. And that was, when I talked about our journey of the learnings that we had as a committee, that was prior to having the realization that our prior practice of observing Eid and, and some of the other religious-based non-attendance days was not aligned with state and federal laws. So we were not trying to be disingenuous by authoring that question.
I know you weren't.
But just so everyone who's listening. And so we would not put that same question on a future survey, because we now know the answer to that. And the answer is, we have to use other kinds of data than parent survey data. And so survey data would be, when might your son or daughter be absent from school? So that we can then start to see patterns about impact on student attendance. It would not be how they're ranking, the importance of the priority that the calendar committee uses.
And I know none of us want to be sitting here making a decision that might possibly, at a minimum, offend and possibly disenfranchise some of our minority student, student groups. But we've been put in this impossible position, and I keep hearing, why are other districts able to do it? I can only go by what your counsel has been to us. We might be the first now, because this isn't just about four holidays, right? Do we, we, do we tell Kwanzaa and Greek Orthodox, sorry, you're, you weren't first, so we can't even consider you. This isn't just about four holidays. And are you hearing that this conversation is becoming more of a conversation, especially in the high school districts? This, this type of operational decision with metrics and challenges is becoming more of a conversation with our, I mean, I know, and I appreciated the data with our neighboring districts, but I can only assume that if other districts are not talking about it, it's just because they're not talking about it yet.
Correct. That, that would be the situation. And I think Niles and Lake Forest four and five years ago. And I think we are part of a second wave, and I think we'll see many more. I mean, Chicago Public School had a challenge a while ago. So there, I think the idea of legal challenges coming to different districts, you, you can't anticipate when that might happen. But it definitely, those kind of challenges go across all states and across suburban, urban, all kinds of districts. So the fact that our district or our neighboring districts or others may be faced with a challenge on their current practices, we, we would all be held to the same standard.
And while we're also monitoring our survey data, we will also be monitoring our actual attendance data, because it may come to fruition that our actual attendance. I mean, I guess, I appreciate the conversation of the, why we are being advised the way we are. But, and also, one of my questions was, how do we change this conversation to, we want our students to participate in their religious holiday and practice? Our conversation needs to be, how do we make sure our policy with our teachers is robust enough and accountable enough so that when students? That was always, what was brought to us is, we are always going to choose school over our religion, and we don't want that to be the decision. I don't. How do we make sure that our students can respect their religion, have a day, take their day, and not feel like they are missing out and that they are going to be supported so when they make that choice? I, I appreciated the language must and will, because that was missing in the previous, you know, what will the teachers do? It was always, they should. So we have changed the language to must and will. And I know our teachers are going to be behind it too, right? Because I think we're all collectively wanting that. But I think that is where our, now that if we make this decision, we have to make sure that that is as robust as possible, so that our students can make that choice.
I'd just like to interrupt here. I need to remind the audience that this is a public meeting. That means that we are holding our meeting in public. We will not entertain questions from the audience or have a dialogue at this point. So I appreciate that your hands went up, and I would love to hear from you, but now is not the time. Yeah, and feel free to send an email to any one of us with your question. Dr. Herman, probably the first point, but to any one of us would be fine. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Cara. Do you have anything, so? I want to be sure that we hear from everyone.
So I did have a, one, one random thought and then a, a more general statement. Cara just mentioned our teachers, and I am in full agreement with Cara's statement that no one should misconstrue changing our calendar with thinking that means they are supposed to be in school. The spirit of the First Amendment, which I hold very dear, is not to penalize minorities, especially religious minorities. It was intended to protect them by not allowing government institutions to favor any religion or theocracy. And while it pains me, and I've had several sleepless nights over this issue, although I'm not a constitutional scholar or a lawyer, the First Amendment is very clear. It says that no government body that has, that's a taxing body will establish theocracy or promote religion, nor prevent the free expression of speech or religion. So the way that I interpret that, it's very clearly the right and the responsibility of the individual to choose whether or not to practice religion. And it is the responsibility and the legal obligation of public institutions to neither prohibit the freedom of religious expression or promote it. When we look at the way universities operate, when we look at the way employers operate, they do not close their buildings to demonstrate that they value diversity, equity, and inclusion. I, I don't go to my bank and demand that they be closed on Yom Kippur. I, that, that, that isn't the way it works. And when my university students want to exercise their freedom of religion, they send their professor an email, and they are guaranteed by the Constitution that they will have an accommodation for their absence. Getting back to our teachers and our building leadership, they have demonstrated throughout this process a willingness and a commitment to continue to support student learning. They already do it when a student has an excused absence for a field trip or for an illness. And the parameters that we're putting in place, the teachers, and, and we have had conversations with the union representation, which Dr. Herman can talk a little bit about, support the spirit of, if we make this change, we are not saying you are expected to be in school. The right and the responsibilities on the individual to exercise their religious freedom and the obligation of us as an institution is to support learning even in the face of an excused absence. And it makes this decision no less difficult, but it makes it clear that by favoring no, no one or two or three religions, we guarantee the freedom of all of the religions. So did you want to talk a little bit about the teachers' union and the support that we've received from the additional guidelines that we're discussing?
Absolutely. We have had two teachers on the committee. And this also has been brought, the draft language was shared with our labor management committee meeting, who again understands the legal thresholds and was in support in concept. Again, they did not have the authority to officially endorse it, and that would take action by the union. But when shared with them, the feedback that they gave us is, yes, we understand board policy may need, the language in our current policy may need to be more explicit to make sure that students and parents and staff are all on the same page about what that means for students to exercise their right to practice religion.
Okay, I would like to say, I have one question first. I guess this goes to Bryant. What are the, the teachers doing on Good Friday? On both of those lists, it says the students are not in attendance. Are there all offices closed on those days, or are the teachers in attendance? Or are the teachers in attendance?
The teachers are not in attendance, no students, but our offices are open.
So 12-month employees and?
12-month employees.
Okay, good. And then just general comments. The way to solve any problem is to pay attention to it. And we're paying attention to it now, but I think that we're going to continue to pay attention to it over time. This is not a one-time fight. And as our demographic changes, so will our policies. And I, I really appreciate how much effort has gone into this by so many people in the community. Because it's an important issue. I, I understand why it's important for people to freely be able to express their religious I think that it's, that in one way, it does indeed honor our students by taking a day But taking a day off is not the only way to honor diversity. And I believe that our district has made a very forward commitment to honoring diversity. And while I am very likely to support the recommendation that has been made by the committee, I want the community to know that we appreciate the continued dialogue and that this is a public body. And as a public body, I firmly stand behind the Establishment Clause. And I believe that that's how democracy works, is by being democratic and continuing to work the process.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
About the Constitution and democracy and our democratic process? If we disregard what the Constitution says here, what else are we giving permission to disregard? What, what happens then if we were asked to entertain prayer in schools? Because we did not fulfill the spirit of the First Amendment. We decided to take it into our own hands, and because of how we wanted to continue a previous practice, put aside what we understand as, as board members who have taken an oath and as a district that has not one but two legal opinions that make our responsibility not to misuse our institution to establish religion clear. So I don't want to overdramatize this, but it is a slippery slope when you take the law into your own hands.
Board members, any other discussion on this point?
Just to be clear, this will come before the board at our?
Correct.
November board meeting, that's next Monday.
And we will vote at that point whether or not to adopt the recommendations that have been put forward by the committee. All right. Moving on to 3B, the employment employees.
Employment, employment of employees. We do have a personal report. I'm making this recommendation for these employees for approval at the board meeting next week.
Any question? All right, moving on to 3C, educational tours. I did make a comment earlier to Carol that some of the links that are embedded, some of us were not able to get into, and she will attend to that in future efforts to put the administrative content up. And thank you to the teachers who responded to the request for access.
I didn't have any trouble with the links, did you?
I did. Inside the document.
Yeah. The itinerary link.
The itinerary.
None would open.
You had that permission.
I see.
If anybody would like recommendations on where to go to Marion, Illinois, my son spent the summer there.
And I can't wait for Palermo. Like, that's one of the coolest places in Italy is Sicily. And I, I think that's going to be an awesome trip.
So you're saying you're nominating yourself as a chaperone?
If they need a chaperone.
You think they'll have trouble finding?
I don't think they'll have any trouble.
Chaperones?
I've, I've yet to be asked to attend any of these trips because they have very little difficulty finding chaperones.
There's something wrong when you want to go to Italy and I want to go to Marion, Illinois.
You've got to get out more, Cara.
Best barbecue.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the?
I just wanted to thank the staff who, who are planning and leading these trips. There, a lot of these are scheduled out for March of 2025, which seems like a long time from now, but it goes to show you that so many of the little moving parts to these trips and the planning starts so very early. And it's because of that early planning that our students are afforded these amazing experiences. So to those of you who are planning these, keep up the great work. Can't wait to hear about them.
Here, here.
I also want to add that not only does it indicate how much forward planning the teachers are doing, trying to also secure the best pricing for our students, but it also, when you approve these trips this far in advance, it allows families to save over time for the cost of each of these trips. So I also applaud the teachers and sponsors who are doing their best to get information gathered so you can approve it, so we can have groups of people do fundraising and assist families in saving for the cost over time.
All right, moving on, 3D, course weight adjustments.
And again, I know that there was a memo that explained what we're recommending, and this is aligned with our Explore Multiple Paths board goal in terms of trying to make sure that any course that is equivalent to college work receive the similar weighting. And that currently is not the case. And we feel that one aspect of honoring what we said about exploring multiple paths and making sure students know that there's more than one way to complete college-level work, and that would be through dual credit and some of the other things listed in the memo, that we would be moving forward to more students feeling recognized for the high-quality work that they're doing. So I could entertain any questions you might have.
I just was surprised is all. Like, I was surprised that our dual-credit courses were not given the same weight as an AP course. I just assumed, and when I read this, I'm like, can't be. So I'm delighted to see that anyone that's taking a CLC course, for example, we had Earth Science Honors. Those students were taking the class, getting college credit, but they were a 4.0 weighted scale instead of a 5.0 weighted scale. And I appreciate that this move is being made.
Agreed.
Sorry, I cut you off there.
Well said.
Yeah, so again, this came from the Teaching and Learning Department. Ben Rodriguez, who is our new coordinator, is leading this charge, but highly supported by both Assistant Principals at each of the campus. And this received the full endorsement of Teaching and Learning.
Any other questions? Lovely. Okay, Illinois Report Card, summative designation, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism. This is the first of a two-part report.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight to present on the Illinois Report Card. I am Charlotte Eames, Director of Data and Assessment. As stated, thank you. As stated, this will be the first of a two-part series of report card presentations. No problem. I always love a sequel. So the Illinois Report Cards for '22, '23 were made public on Monday, October 30th. And as I'm sure you know, the report cards have a vast amount of information. So tonight's presentation is going to focus on the three areas you see on the screen there, the summative designation, the graduation rates, and chronic absenteeism. And then, again, we'll do a second presentation next week that will cover proficiency rates and our Equity Journey Continuum. So that is something to look forward to. So just a brief, for anyone who's not familiar with accessing the report card, just a brief introduction. Illinois Report Cards can be found at illinoisreportcard.com. And you come to a start page, and you can search for any public school or public district in the state. Report cards are created at both the district and the school level. So you can search for D-128, or you can search for either one of our schools. Just a note that much of the information contained in a school report card is the same as in a district report card, but there are certain things that only apply to one or the other. So for instance, tonight, we're looking at summative designation. That is only something that schools have. A district does not have a summative designation. Next week, we'll look at the Equity Journey Continuum. That is for districts only. Schools individually don't have one that is for the district. So upon entering into a report card, you'll see kind of a starting page that, they call it a snapshot page. You see some tiles on that page with some of the most pertinent information that is reported. And all of those tiles are clickable, as well as there is a menu down the left side of each screen with tons of more information. So there's so much to, to get into, and there's various ways to get to it. You're seeing images of what it will look like when you first enter into D-128's report card. That's the leftmost image with more of the green coloring. And then the two school report cards have more of the yellow coloring. So, but they do look very similar in terms of where things are. And as you are navigating, there's lots of different routes to go. So you've got a big menu, and you've got those tiles that can be clicked on. So tonight, I want to start by looking at the summative designation. Each school in Illinois receives a summative designation. These are calculated by assigning each school points for the accountability indicators at their level. So elementary and middle schools have certain indicators, and then high school has different indicators. So you're seeing on the screen, the high school indicators, kind of in, in that pie chart. Each indicator is weighted, so different indicators are worth different amounts toward the summative designation score. For high schools, 75% of the score comes from academic indicators. Those are the pieces of the pie that are in shades of blue. Those are all what are considered academic indicators. And the, the largest of that is graduation rate, which we will discuss tonight. So that's worth 50% of a high school's summative designation score, graduation rate. And then 25% of the score comes from school quality and student success indicators. Those are in shades of yellow in the pie chart. Currently, there are only those three things shown in, in that set. But in 2025, there will be others added. College and career readiness and fine arts indicators are coming in the next few years. So based on the indicator scores that we just saw, schools are placed into one of five categories. And I know that's, that's really tiny, and, and we're not going to go into it all, just really showing there are five categories that a school can be placed into. And we are extremely excited to announce that both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School achieved exemplary status again this year. Exemplary high schools are in the top 10% of all schools in the state. They have a graduation rate higher than 67%, and they have no targeted student groups. This means no student groups who are performing below the all-students group of the lowest-performing 5% of schools. So congratulations to our schools for exemplary status. This next slide shows a new visualization that is available on report cards this year. This is something we haven't seen before. And this is showing us the thresholds. So the, the exemplary status and the comprehensive targeted status, those are based on the, the top 10 and the bottom 5%. So the, the score threshold of what that means changes from year to year because it's based on that year's data from various schools. So this is just showing where the thresholds are and where our schools landed within those thresholds. So you can see, for exemplary, that was at 91.24 points for the summative designation score and where Libertyville fell. So just kind of a neat visualization to sort of put some of the numbers into context. And we haven't had this before, so it kind of helps to get a better idea of, of what this all means. And here is the same image for Vernon Hills. So that is a summative designation. And so tonight, we're going to look at the two pieces of the pie that, that are the, the most weighted. So graduation rate at 50% of our summative designation score, and then chronic absenteeism, which is 10%, and we'll look at that as well. So the graduation rate score is a combination of the four, five, and six-year graduation rates. So those all go into that score, but they are, in this portion of the score, they are also weighted. So the four-year graduation rate is worth 60%. The five-year is worth 30%, and, and the six-year is worth 10%. So that's what makes up that piece of the score. Both LHS and VHHS earned the maximum points toward their summative designation score in the graduation category. So essentially, 50 out of 50 points for that particular measure. So let's take a look at them. So you will see the, kind of in the center tile that you see there, that's just a screenshot from Libertyville's report card. That is the four-year graduation rate. And that's usually a tile right there on that snapshot page that we talked about. And then when you click into it, you can get some more information. So that's the four-year graduation rate that we are seeing there. And then once we click in, we see the five-year and the six-year as well. So if you look at the image on the right, you're seeing on the top, the four-year graduation rate, followed by the five-year, followed by the six-year, and you're seeing a comparison of the school to the district to the state. And the color coding remains the same throughout the report card. So school information in yellow, district information in that kind of lime green, and state information in that darker green. And they present on the report card, this comparison throughout. In, in most of the metrics that you look at, you'll see this comparison. Of course, if you're in the district report card, you don't see the yellow, you see just the district and the state. So this is Libertyville's rates, four-year graduation rate of 94.8%, five-year graduation rate of 94.7%, and six-year graduation rate of 96.3%. Those are really impressive numbers, and we are very proud of Libertyville. And we are also very proud of Vernon Hills. They had a four-year graduation rate of 95.8%, a five-year graduation rate of 95.0%, and a six-year graduation rate of 95.7%. So really, really impressive numbers for graduation rates. So our report card, of course, lets us take a deeper dive into all of this. And we need to look at the disaggregated data as we always do, and take a look at how some of our populations are doing in comparison to our total students. So what you're seeing here, this is only four-year graduation rates. We're looking at four-year graduation rates for the past three years. So trying to look at a little bit of trends. And this is how it's presented on the report card. I have a slide coming that, that is a little prettier, but I had to make it. So this is what we see on the report card. Because we're always seeing that comparison with the state. We can't always manipulate it on the report card to see the year after year right, right next to each other. In certain images, you can, in this one, this is how it's presented. So if you're kind of wanting to look at a trend, you're looking vertically. So we see all students all the way there on the left side and looking at those trends going vertically, because we're looking at three years there. So here, we're looking at all of our students. We've got our low-income students, our English learners, our students with IEPs. And this is really good news. We see that there are some gaps in graduation rate with some of our populations, but if you look closely, you will see that those But if you look closely, you will see that those gaps are closing in several instances. And our low-income English learners and students with IEPs are starting to get closer and closer to our overall rate. And I especially want to point out the English learners. And I know the numbers are a little hard to see up on the screen, but the four-year graduation rate for English learners in 2021 was 81.5%. And in 2023, 88.9%. So not quite at that 95-ish percent that we have for all students, but getting closer and closer. And so that is really something that we should be proud of, that the students in these populations are successfully graduating and we are closing those gaps. And here, we are looking at two of our race populations next to all students. So we have all students again, and then we have our black population, and we have our Hispanic population. The gaps for our Hispanic population, very, very small. So that's a really great thing to see. For our black students, though, the gaps are quite a bit larger. And the thing that I want to point out for our black students here is that while the state, black student graduation rates have increased over the past three years, our black student graduation rates have decreased. That is really something that we need to hone in on and ask ourselves why and what can we do about it. So you can see, if you're looking at the middle green bars, how they kind of change which one is higher. So something for us to really focus on, especially knowing that statewide, that gap is slowly but surely closing little by little. We need to be doing the same. So something for us to really focus on as we move forward. And here is something you won't see on the report card. I wanted to show that information that I was just speaking about again in a way where we're really focused on just that piece. So I did make this. You can't find this in our report card, but of course, it's the information from the report card. So it's the same thing I just spoke about. It's not new information, but just looking at it in a way that's just a little bit easier on our eyes to see what's happening there. So that dark green state graduation rate for black students, it's not increasing in a big way, but little by little increasing, and ours is decreasing pretty significantly. So we can kind of see that a little better on this slide. So again, an area of focus for us as we move forward. So next, we're going to look at chronic absenteeism. This is 10% of our summative designation score. Chronic absenteeism, I want to find this on my list so that I read verbatim the definition. Chronic absenteeism refers to students who miss more than 10% of the school year, excused or unexcused. So this represents any absence, whatever the reason. That's chronic absenteeism. This is important right now because statewide, we're seeing some trends. In the Illinois State Board of Education's weekly message from October 21st, it was noted that persistently high chronic absenteeism is an ongoing challenge across the state. And chronic absenteeism rates have not returned to their pre-COVID levels. So this is something that the state is watching very closely and something we also need to be watching closely. In terms of our summative designation score, this is worth 10 points. LHS earned 6.74, and VHHS earned 6.63 out of 10 points toward their summative designation scores in that area. When we look at the data, we're going to look at district-wide. We're not going to break down into the schools, but they were very close with their score in that area. So you're seeing here a couple of things. The first, on the left side, larger graph is simply showing the 2022-23 chronic absenteeism rate for our district compared to the state. So looking at that graph, we do see that our, and this is a number that we want to be low, we want a low number here. So we do see, we had 17.1% chronic absenteeism. The state's was 28.3. So when we do the comparison, we're ahead of the game there. But I want to draw your attention now to the second graph. That's showing our trend. And so you can see evidence of what the state was reporting in that weekly message of about a week ago, that we have not returned to our pre-COVID levels of chronic absenteeism, and we are seeing increases. And you kind of see some ins and outs there, but in the past two years, some pretty strikingly high numbers for chronic absenteeism as compared to what we've seen in the past. And here, we are looking again at our student populations. The top graph is showing our populations by race. The bottom graph, we're looking at our low-income English learners and students with IEPs. And again, this is just the current data, the data from last school year, and looking at the district compared to the state. So you kind of see a number of lighter green bars that are lower. So we're ahead of the game if we're comparing ourselves to where the state is. But we also see some places, especially in that bottom graph, where our numbers are getting a little closer, even in some cases, higher than what the state is reporting. So those, again, are populations that we need to be aware of and watching out for and put some focus into. We'll look at trends for each of those populations, just to give an idea of the overall picture. So you're seeing on the left, that's for all of our students. So you've seen that graph before, a couple slides ago. That's our trend as a district as a whole. And then next to it, we're pointing out the trends for our black students and the trends for our Hispanic students. So we do see some gaps there, a pretty significant gap for our black students. 44% chronic absenteeism for our black students in 2022-23. And once again, you see the all students graph in that light green. The orange is our low-income students. The darker green is English learners, and the pink is students with IEPs. So we are definitely seeing that we have a higher incidence of chronic absenteeism for these populations. With 178 school days on our calendar, a student who misses 18 or more days from school will be chronically absent. And again, we've seen this rate increasing and not returning to pre-COVID levels over the past couple of years. We're aware that we need to find some solutions. Our students can't learn if they're not in school. So this is something that we have been focusing on already this year. We've introduced some new procedures around attendance, and it begins with placing attendance rates into various tiers. So you can see the tiers on the screen there. And for each tier, then, there are specific defined supports in place. And as students move into the tier two and then the tier three level, we have set interventions that we are ready to implement. I'm going to turn this over for a moment to Dr. Ellis Bowen. She has been leading this charge, working with our staff to put some new procedures into place, working with our LSTs and administrators to ensure that we are ready with the interventions that we need to make sure that our students are in school as much as possible. So I'll let her speak just briefly on some of the things we're doing.
So, good evening, Board of Ed, as well as our D 128 community members that are watching online. So a team of various stakeholders have been meeting since April of last year to begin to review the practices and procedures for attendance overall within the district. As we have looked at our procedures, as well as our practice, and including data that we are collecting, it was important for us as a committee to take a look at the district's expectations, as well as interventions, which includes outreach services for our students pertaining to attendance. As we reviewed and updated our interventions, we wanted to make sure that there were alignment, that there was alignment to ISB recommendations and protocols, especially in the areas of tiered interventions. And so those five areas are monitoring data. So what we did was not only identify data, but then also created the thresholds for attendance. We also began to identify practices that involved student as well as family engagement and begin to identify those gaps, recognize strong improvement attendance. So looking at implementing practices that not only recognize the negatives of what's going on or our deficits, but begin to recognize the positives, even if that is very small. Improvement is an improvement. Last but not least, our personalized outreach, so beginning to look at supports within our community, at the ROE, that we can begin to engage with and bring into our district. And then last but not least, making sure that we are exhausting any and every barrier that is presenting our students from coming into the building. Information regarding our updated attendance has been communicated to our staff, and there will be continuous communication moving forward with our staff. There is also some information forthcoming to our parents and students regarding attendance. With full implementation, we took this semester to do the communication piece for all stakeholders with full implementation of these updates for the second semester of this school year. With the involvement of all community members, improving to improve our inform practices, which involves consistency, I can't say that word enough, and effective communication structures, as well as continuing to review and augment our practices that are aligned with our current and future student body. Hopefully, we begin to address some of the deficits and gaps that you guys have been seeing or Charlotte has reported in the school report card.
Can I ask just a quick clarifying question, Dr. Eb? In light of the conversation we just had about the calendar, if we have a student that is out two days because they're sick, and then out two days with an excused absence for religious observance, are they going to trigger interventions where none are appropriate?
So right now, with chronic absenteeism, the thresholds that you see before you are for unexcused absences. So they are not part of, the unexcused absences are not part of that criteria for excused absences, which would be college visits, medical exemptions, mental health days, religious holidays. However, within our policy, when a student has reached 10 excused absences, unless that parent has some type of medical documentation, or court documentation, or there has been administrative approval, after that 11th day, it becomes an unexcused absence. And then that's when this will provide a trigger.
Understood.
But 10, but students within our district have 10, have the ability to have 10 excused absences for any of the criteria that's written.
I just want to clarify one thing, though. The tiers and how we defined it does not include excused absences, so our practices and protocols. But the state does include excused and unexcused in its definition.
Well, that's one of the questions I wanted to ask.
So I just want to make sure that we're being very clear.
But even with the state, it doesn't include it until that student has reached 10. So it aligns to our policy. So what you see up there is that the chronic absenteeism, it is for, the state definition does say absent, absences, regardless of what they are. However, ISB, as well as our policies, allow those 10 excused absences. So with knowing that, it does not, it will not trigger any of our thresholds for tier one, tier two, or tier three for chronic absenteeism without taking into account those 10 absences that are granted to our students.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So are the five mental health days still allowable?
Yes. They are considered under the excused absence.
But a hypothetical would be, a student takes their five mental health days, let's say two religious holidays. That means they get three sick days for the entire year, and then they're considered chronically absentee. So is that?
No.
The next day, the 11th day?
So even with the 11th day, they're not considered chronic absent, chronically absent. However, we begin our process of beginning to look at providing interventions for that student. So with that specific example, the 10 excused absence, as long as there are, the parent has followed all the protocols to call that student in, along with following the criteria, those students technically have a little bit more leeway versus a student who does not follow the criteria and their parents are not calling in for them and is considered an unauthorized absence or an unexcused absence.
I guess what I was more generally asking, when we're looking at our percentages of chronically absent, pre-COVID, we went from 10 to 17% in all students. Have we looked to see if those 17% students who are chronically absent are utilizing all five of their mental health days? Do you see mental health day exercising five mental health days as something that is contributing to our increase in chronic absenteeism?
So while I would say that we haven't gone and had an in-depth look at our data when in regards to attendance, what I can say is that there is a trend of mental health, as well as school withdrawal, that is impacting, along with some other concerns that is definitely impacting our chronic absenteeism.
Which I know we are not, we have no control over because it's something that is allowable under ISB rule, but you know, just some kind of reasoning of why, because I think that's something that's worth looking into.
Yeah, we can definitely do more analysis there. Yes, thank you. So that is about all for tonight's presentation. We've, to review, we've looked at our summative designation, and we've looked at the two largest pieces of that summative designation pie, graduation rate and chronic absenteeism. Next week, we will see a presentation on proficiency rates and the Equity Journey Continuum. Meanwhile, the Illinois report card is accessible to anyone. There is a wealth of information. It's incredibly well-designed and user-friendly, many, many ways to look at data, lots of trend data, lots of demographic comparisons available. So I encourage you, because we're certainly not going to be able to cover all of it in two presentations, I encourage you to dig into it yourself. And if you have any questions as you dig into it, you know where to find me. I'm happy to help interpret or answer any questions. And with that, are there any further questions tonight?
Well, I just want to acknowledge Charlotte for the great work that you did to distill down the volumes of data to help the board prioritize understanding the summative designation, how important our graduation rates are, and the differences we're seeing in subgroups, and then to link chronic absenteeism to actual attendance practices that Dr. Ellis Bowen is leading among our staff and our practices. Again, it's voluminous, and I appreciate you helping to make sure the board knows some of the key pieces that are linked either to some of the challenges that we've identified and want to improve on, or some of the things that might be new in terms of indicators for the state. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple. For any given population, when we disaggregate data, how many students are we talking about? So that's one piece of the puzzle. Because if you have, this is yearly data, so you So you might have 10 students one year, two students the next year, eight students the next year. Like, is there a way that we could look at how many students there are? I don't know if you could do that or not.
And if I could just add on to what you're wondering, because I was wondering the same thing. If we have a subgroup who only has a very few number of students, there, the impact of one or two students is disproportionate to all students.
Yes.
I also was wondering if there's a way not to use proportionality to avoid addressing gaps in subgroups. That is absolutely not what I'm suggesting. But just to be able to see the number of students in that group so that when we see a large swing up or down, we can sort of accommodate for, well, it was eight this year, but it's only two this year. So that's why the impact percentage-wise is so large.
Right, true, yes. And we, we do certainly have access to that. I don't have that off the top of my head. But certainly, yes, we can, we can get those numbers. And, and when we do this, we're, we are aware. Our black student population is a very small one. So we, we are aware there is some disproportionality as we are looking at that. So you're absolutely right. But we can get those numbers so that we really know what, how many students we're talking about.
Yeah, and again, it is not because the smaller number makes it not important. Every student is important, and we want to address all of those gaps. We don't want to use that information in any way to, to not address.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Absolutely, yes.
Just to throw in a quick, two comments. While there's not counts, but there's percentages on the report card as well.
Right.
You can actually go back in the book to see what percent, yeah, in the report, what percent this population makes up. The, the other comment, though, and having done some, some research on some subgroup populations and whatnot, the thing to realize is we're looking at a three-year trend, but it's not really a three-year trend. It's three independent cohorts of students. So it's not the same student being more absent, performing differently. It's three different groups of students. And those, each one of those groups has their own story and their own challenges. So it's, it's just, while it's, it's concerning that numbers are going, you know, the state's going this way and we're going that way in a, a certain populations, it's, there's always more to the story than, than what you see.
Absolutely.
And then if you could just remind me, we've seen presentations before, and you identify trends. At what point do we come back and look at what we did to address those trends? I know that we do that, I just, if you could give me a timeline.
I think that is dependent on which data we're investigating. So I can't give you a straightforward answer. But I can tell you, we will certainly do those next steps and, and then follow up. So, yes, yeah, yeah. So we can get back to you with some more, a more firm answer on that. But yeah, it's, it is very dependent, I think, on what we're doing and who's involved. So, but we will, we will get back to you.
I mean, it might be a year from now, but at some point. Are there any other questions? All right, then we are moving forward to the 2024, 2025 course proposals, 3F.
And again, in Dr. Sanchez's absence tonight, I would be happy to answer questions, as would, I know both Larry and Charlotte sit on the teaching and learning team and engaged in many conversations. But again, there are several things to celebrate about not only the new courses that are on this list, but the significant work that both Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School administration and staff has been doing to meet our goal of equitable opportunities at both schools. So the idea, once we, it was raised to their attention about some of the differences and opportunities between one school or another, every year, they have been bringing some of those things and saying, yes, we, we want to try and bring these opportunities so that there's parity for every student. And so I really want to recognize the staff for not only the innovative new things, but also improving access that students have to similar learning experiences.
There's a lot.
If there's any questions.
This is way more than a normal year of new.
There, in terms of, I think that comes and goes a little bit with waves. And in terms of the number of new class courses, I think there's maybe a few more than normal. But a lot of these others are retitling, are making sure that the opportunities between both schools are consistent. So the, the length of the overall list is longer. But again, it's because we're not just bringing new ideas, we're going back and refining the existing course proposal, or the existing course structures, and making a few other adjustments that we've identified as needing to be updated.
Like opening them to sophomores, juniors, as opposed to just seniors.
Correct.
I'd love to see that. No other questions?
I'm just thrilled to see how great a job, as Dr. Herman already said, we're doing it, addressing, making sure we have equal opportunities at both buildings. So thank you for that.
Right, then moving on to future agenda items. There are a number listed in the future agenda items on board docs. Is there anything else that anybody would like to add? Okay, we're very quiet here. I'm adjourning this meeting. Wish I had a thing to.
Yeah, gavel. I'm gonna take a quick five-minute break before.
Yeah.
Facilities and finance, finance.
Carol, that gives you time.
Okay, we'll call to order the Facilities and Finance Committee for November 6. We previously did the pledge, so we don't have to do that. We have on the agenda invitation for public comment. Now, we have three items for discussion: long-term funding options for capital projects, 2023 tax levy, and an update on the Park Avenue properties. So we will start with invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the committee? Seeing none, move on to our long-term funding options for capital projects. I will turn it over to Dan and our guest from PMA.
Good evening. Let me get this up on the screen, and I will introduce my esteemed guest. There we go. So this is Tammy Beck with Shamo. She's with PMA. She'll introduce herself, but I have been working with Tammy, I think, it's gotta be over 10 years, that I've known her, and she is one of my favorite people in school business. And so context for the discussions, and Mithalash, this is a little bit of context for you. We've been looking at this for quite a while. There's a lot of projects that there is desire to do, and my counsel has been there's not enough funding to do the projects that everybody wants to do. And so your only options, if you want to do the projects, your only options are you reduce spending in other areas, so that you can spend money on this, and/or you look at more funding. And we have been looking at different ways. Actually, it was at my annual conference that I just happened to be walking through the exhibit hall, and I saw Tammy, I said hi, and it just kind of dawned on me in that moment, an idea for how we could access funding to meet our capital desires. And so we started talking then, this was back in May, and then talked a little bit more over the summer, and now I feel like we're ready to show you real, I think, realistic options for how you can access more funding. So I'm gonna turn it to Tammy. She's gonna explain, walk through stuff. I probably will jump in to give context as well, but for now, I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy.
Oh, and now I'm gonna share. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that very kind introduction, Dan. I think it's a mutual admiration society, knowing Dan for as long as I have and working with him, really, really stellar person in the field. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We have several topics to go through. I won't name all of them here, but we will be going through these various agenda items tonight, and look forward to sharing quite a bit of information to you that I hope will be helpful in the context that Dan provided. Just a very first topic, a quick overview of PMA. I know some of you may be somewhat familiar with PMA, probably more on the investment side of things, but there's an umbrella under PMA of several different companies. I'm in that green box on the left side called Public Finance. There are several different divisions within PMA, but we are headquartered in Naperville. We have offices in Wisconsin and Minnesota, but our public finance practice is also headquartered in Naperville, but we do have a very active Midwest presence. And I've had the good fortune of working in the public finance industry for a very long time. I actually also have a prior life as a school business manager, did that a long time ago, but I've been in this business now for about 26 years. So I spend all my time helping school districts and some community college districts in the state of Illinois with the issuance of municipal securities. Our firm acts as what's called a municipal advisor. So on this graph, it's that upper left-hand corner, and we work with issuers like school districts in Illinois and the issuance of municipal securities or bonds. We'll talk more about in a little bit. That means that we are highly regulated by the federal regulators, and we have a fiduciary duty to our clients, making sure that you enter into financings that make the most sense for your district, make sure that you understand all of the variables that you should consider when you're going into a financing, and actually, sometimes that also means advising our clients not to do certain things if we don't think it's in their best interest. So we take that fiduciary duty very seriously, because of course, you as the school district issuing the debt are at the center of the entire process, and there are other parties listed on this graph as well that I won't go into great detail about tonight unless you have specific questions, but I just wanted to give you some context in the role that PMA serves in public finance. We have a lot of experience. I won't spend a lot of time talking about all the school districts that we work with, but I do want to let you know that for 16 years, we have served as a municipal advisor to school districts in the state more than any other firm in Illinois. So we have a very, very deep bench of people that we spend all of our time helping the education market in Illinois. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor of some of the school districts in Lake County that we work with. You'll see a lot of your neighbors here, and I also am a Lake County resident, by the way. I only live about 20 minutes away, so would love lots of opportunities to drive over to the district in the future. So we have a very good familiarity with Lake County school districts as well. So just to first talk about school districts and their abilities to borrow money, I know some of you may have some experience with this topic, some of you may not have really any at all, but just to make sure we're all starting from the same point of view, school districts, when they want to borrow money for capital projects, or really for any purpose, it's not like they can just go to the bank and take out a loan. The Illinois School Code is very clear about the ways in which you can borrow money, particularly as it pertains to capital projects. So you issue municipal bonds, and you say to an investor, I want to borrow this amount of money from you with this maturity schedule, so there's a fixed rate of interest, there's a fixed debt service schedule or principal and interest schedule that you agree to as a board to pay back over time. And most types of financing school districts in Illinois enter into have a maximum issuance of 20 years. There are a couple exceptions to that, but for the most part, it's a 20-year maximum maturity schedule. So you might have 20 different maturities with 20 different interest rates. Typically, the further you go out on that schedule, the higher the interest rate. There can be some exceptions to that, again, depending on what's happening with the yield curve in any given market, but you are with that schedule for the life of your transaction. When we talk about bond and interest levy, that means when you are borrowing money and asking taxpayers to support the debt service payments on that, you have the ability to extend a bond and interest levy to the county clerk, and we'll talk more about how you have that ability in a minute. But when you see your tax bill every year that comes out in the spring, and you see the total tax rate for the high school district, that bond and interest levy would be embedded within that total tax rate. It's not separated out, it's not something that you see individually on your tax bill, but it's part of the total tax rate of a school district if they have bonds that are outstanding. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to start with is just to give you a sense of how you fit within the statutory debt capacity in Illinois. So every high school district in Illinois has to take its current equalized assessed valuation, or its EAV, and multiply it times 6.9%. And then if you have existing debt outstanding, then you subtract from that number. You are debt-free, so you have almost $228 million of debt capacity, so a very sizable amount, as you can see, but that's a good backpocket number for you to know as a board. What is our statutory ability to borrow money? And this speaks just to the principal, not the interest component. So going back to the school code and how it says you can borrow money for capital projects, there are a couple different ways under the, again, the viewpoint of what revenue source would we pay it back from. So we'll start with general obligation, or GO, school bonds. General obligation means that you have the full faith and credit, or the tax base, of the school district behind you. That's your ability to extend, have asked the county clerk to extend property taxes, get those property taxes from taxpayers, and then you make debt service payments on money that you borrow through a GO bond. And there's two types of GO bonds. One is through a traditional referendum with school building bonds, which we'll talk more a little bit about later, and the other option are non-referendum GO bonds via what's called a debt service extension base. You do not have a debt service extension base, or a DCEB, as we call it for short, but we're gonna talk more about that tonight and how you might establish one. There are other ways that school districts can borrow money for capital projects, but the main way that they're different than the options listed above is that you as a district would say, we're going to use operating dollars to pay the debt back, and those are by way of usually alternate revenue bonds or debt or lease certificates. They're not appropriate for every school district, they're not preferred by, I would say, most school districts, because again, it's putting pressure on your operating funds, dollars that you're using to pay teachers and provide other resources for students. Yep.
So to say it another way, when we're talking, we'll talk about how to get the money, but how you pay it back is one of two ways. There's an additional tax levy, meaning the residents pay more taxes, or you pay it out of your existing operating budget. And what I'm going to say to you is that I don't believe you have capacity in your existing operating budget to issue any kind of meaningful debt that would make a dent in the projects that you want to look at.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's talk about this concept of a debt service extension base. So this goes back almost 30 years, and there was a law that was put into place in 1994, and it said if you are in a tax cap county, like Lake County, and whatever amount of non-referendum debt service your school district had at that point, so the principal and interest amount for levy year 1994, that established your DCEB, and it said that going forward, you could borrow money on a non-referendum basis as long as your annual payment didn't exceed that levy year 1994 amount for non-referendum debt service. School districts back at that point actually had a few months heads up that this law was coming, and so when faced with this situation, some school districts stepped back and said, we have some non-referendum debt outstanding, and whatever it is for that year, that'll establish our DCEB. Some districts said, well, we have some debt outstanding, but we're gonna hurry up and go out and sell some more non-referendum debt to raise it, so we give ourselves some flexibility as a district going forward in our ability to borrow on a non-referendum basis. And some districts didn't have any non-referendum debt outstanding, like your district, and said, we're not going to go out and sell debt. We believe the right thing to do is to continue the path that we have, and we may cross that bridge down the road, but your district is one of the districts that did not have non-referendum debt outstanding in levy year 1994. But you can establish one with voter approval, and what it would do is enable you, if you establish a DCEB, to borrow money again on a non-referendum basis, and enable you to extend property taxes every single year up to, again, a certain amount for debt service, as long as you go through the necessary proceedings, legal proceedings that are required to issue such debt, which I can talk more about in a minute. So as I mentioned, if you have a DCEB, you can issue bonds for a period of up to 20 years at any point. There are several types of non-referendum bonds available to a school district if it has a DCEB. I won't focus on the last two listed on this page, but I'll spend a minute talking about working cash and life safety. Most school districts, when they have a DCEB and they want to fund capital projects, they issue what are called working cash bonds against that DCEB. And so what happens is the school district generates bond proceeds, it's deposited into the working cash fund, and then by way of board resolution, the proceeds get transferred to the capital projects fund by way of the O and M fund, because ISB wants those dollars spent out of the capital projects fund for such projects. So that, I would say, is the most common avenue that school districts in Illinois use if they have a DCEB for projects on a non-referendum basis. Sometimes, school districts issue life safety bonds for capital projects, and that's applicable if a school district has gone through a process with its architect to have approvals signed at...
This should be familiar to us. We just went through this.
Okay, great. So ISB has to sign off on your list of life safety projects and say, yes, you may issue life safety bonds as a non-referendum bond to fund those projects. There are some requirements from a legal perspective listed at the bottom here. All of these require what's called a Bond Issued Notification Act hearing, or a BINA hearing, which functions much like the hearing you have for your budget or your tax levy every year. You need to give the public the opportunity, by way of a notice in the newspaper, to come in and provide any comments on the plans to sell the bonds. Working cash fund bonds and funding bonds, even though I didn't talk in great detail about funding bonds tonight, those two types require also what's called a 30-day petition period or a backdoor referendum period. So if you declare that you as a board are ready to start to issue working cash bonds after you have established a DCEB, that one of the very first things you would do is adopt what's called a resolution of intent, and within a couple days after that board meeting, oh, thanks, that's okay, you put a notice in the newspaper notifying the public that you intend to issue the working cash bonds. And once that notice hits the paper, it starts the 30-day clock, and if within the 30 days, at least 10% of the registered voters within the district sign and submit a petition to the board, then the board would have two choices, either to abandon plans to sell working cash bonds on a non-referendum basis, or decide to go directly to the voters and ask for approval to sell working cash bonds. That scenario is pretty rare, as you can imagine, but it is part of the legal process, so just wanted to make sure you're aware, at least at a high level today, of some of the legal proceedings that you would have to follow as a board. So let's talk a little bit about a DCEB referendum versus a traditional building bond referendum. For sure, most school districts are more familiar, and boards of education are more familiar, at least contextually, with a traditional building bond referendum question. So if you are putting a DCEB referendum on the ballot, it's giving you essentially a long-term financing mechanism, because you're saying, this is what we want our annual debt service payment, our debt service levy to be, and over time into perpetuity, we would want to issue bonds potentially on a non-referendum basis and continue to fund projects over time. The wisdom of the legislature back in the early 1990s was to give school districts the ability to take care of a lot of facilities needs that maybe aren't a brand-new school or a 100,000-square-foot addition on a school, but to be able to deal with things like renovation of classrooms and HVAC and windows and other things that are normal upkeep, they wanted to, school districts to have the ability to take care of those things without having to go to the voters every single time. That was really what the logic was, the General Assembly 30 years ago. So it's giving you that long-term financing mechanism, whereas a traditional building bond referendum is saying, on the ballot, may the school district have permission to issue X amount of bonds to fund these particular projects. So you're borrowing a specific dollar amount, it's a one-time authority. Go ahead. Sure.
So I think the main difference here is, if you think about, think about it in terms of, like personally for a mortgage, a building bond says, we would like to borrow $100 billion to do X. We want to borrow $100 billion to build Vernon Hills High School, for example. That's what that is. It's one-time borrowing that you pay back over a long period of time, 20 years. But a DCEB is basically asking for what's our annual mortgage payment. A DCEB says, we want, it's really not about how much money we're borrowing, it's about how much money we're gonna pay back a year, and you set that dollar amount, and so that's the dollar amount that you have to be able to pay back. And so depending on how many years you borrow for and how much mortgage you can afford, that tells you how much money you can really borrow. So there are two different things. One is a big bucket of money or a small bucket of money, but it's one time, and the DCEB is more about the annual payment that you make back.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, back to the DCEB referendum, that second item there, so if you establish a DCEB, every time you want to sell non-referendum bonds, they will not require direct voter approval, but you would have to go through those legal proceedings that we talked about, a hearing in every situation, and depending on the type that you sell, you may have to go through that petition period as well. Whereas every time you want to issue the traditional building bonds, you have to go to the voters directly, you have to get that approval from your public before you can sell the bonds. So going down a little bit further, though, and we talk about DCEB referendum versus building bond referendum, we're gonna take a look at sample ballot language for a DCEB referendum in a minute, but one of the things that will jump out at you pretty quickly is there is no mention of a project or list of projects in the ballot language. You are merely asking for the ability to have a maximum annual debt service payment for non-referendum bonds, whereas that traditional building bond referendum question, as I said, it will at least generally spell out what the projects are that the district wants to complete with that voter approval. And in general, issuing or going to the voters with a DCEB referendum does require more voter education as compared to a building bond referendum. Not that a building bond referendum process doesn't require voter education, it certainly does, it's also a lot of intense focus and work on behalf of the district to bring such a question to the voters, but a DCEB referendum is not as straightforward, and I think if we look at the ballot language, that'll sort of jump out as to why that's the case. So we have two versions of a DCEB referendum ballot language here. So this is exactly how it would look at the top, where it's establishing the debt service extension base. We've left blank what the dollar amount might be. We can talk more about that a little bit later, but you're basically saying, this is what we want that maximum annual payment to be. But again, there's no mention of a project, there's no mention at all of what the dollar amount would be for the bonds that you would sell. Now, the difference between the two is in the bottom, you can see there's some lighter green language added to the end of it. So I mentioned that the DCEB law went into effect about 30 years ago. Then back in 2009, another law was passed and enabled school districts, starting in that year, going forward, to increase its DCEB annually by the CPI or 5%, whichever is less, much like with the tax cap and PTAL and increasing your operating levy every single year as a district. It's the same concept here. So when you put a question on the ballot for a DCEB referendum, you can do it either way. You could list it just as I have at the top, or you can put it at the bottom with that additional language that says to the voters, we want the ability to also increase the DCEB language over time. So shifting to some data, we compiled some information for you that we thought might be of interest. These are Lake County high school districts. This is as of levy year 2023, what their DCEBs are, and we know what it is because the CPI is known through levy year 2023. So the one that probably jumps out at you is Adley Stevenson 125 on the right-hand side. Their DCEB is over $5.5 million. They have funded, I believe, every single capital project that they have completed over the last 20 to 30 years, if not longer, they have funded through DCEB, through working cash bond issues, maybe some life safety, but that's all been through non-referendum bond issues, because they've had a DCEB since the inception of that law. Mundeline High School 120 has a DCEB of just under $4 million. Warren Township High School District 121 is just under $2 million, and you can see there's a few others that are hovering around $1 million, but one thing that may also jump out at you is for the districts that are fully within Lake County, your district, High School District 117 and Lake Forest 115 do not have DCEBs. So you are not alone, but there are a few in Lake County that do not. And here's a map of the information. So anything in blue means it's a high school district that has a DCEB, and if it's shaded in yellow, it does not. And we thought this might be of interest as well. So this is as of levy year 2022, for both referendum and non-referendum debt. So if it's a blue bar, that's a non-referendum debt service levy, the green portion would be a referendum levy. So looking at, for example, Warren High School District 121, their debt service payment is about $6.6 million per year, combining their non-referendum and referendum debt service outstanding, followed by Township High School District 113, Deerfield and Highland Park. Theirs in combination is almost $6 million. Again, we talked about Stevenson a little bit earlier, and you can see Lake Forest and Mundeline 120's, Lake Forest is all referendum. Yep.
So I think one thing this slide illustrates is that we, what we're talking about DCEB, and the previous slide was showing you DCEB, there's some districts that don't, that the DCEB is one way you can get money, the other one is like a traditional referendum. So what you're seeing is there are districts that sometimes have a combination of both. That would be like Warren, for example, would have a combination of both, but really, the total debt service that they're paying every year and how they get there is interesting. Like Township 113, when I saw the slide before, and I was like, oh, it's really small. I will say, in terms of comps, the two districts that are usually closest to us in comps are District 113, which is Deerfield, Highland Park High Schools, and Stevenson is a great comp for us. And so seeing how their debt is structured and where that money comes from is interesting. And similarly, Lake Forest, no DCEB, but they passed a referendum, and so they went the path of building bond referendum, and that's how that was passed. So just different districts approaching it different ways, and just showing again what she mentioned about Stevenson, theirs has been solely the DCEB.
Just to clarify, this says levy year 2022, and I know they recently passed a referendum. Is this an addition to the Lake Forest? I'm just curious where that, the $4 million is, because I...
Because I, sure, they just sold bonds last week. So the debt service levies for that bond issue are not publicly available yet. However, we do know that the intent was to try to keep their annual debt service payment pretty close to what it's been. So it may have gone up a little bit effective with levy year 23, but I don't anticipate that it would be a significant increase.
Just to put this into a little context, if I remember correctly, last time we sold bonds was to build Vernon Hills High School. We were probably, I want to say it was in the 6 million-ish range for our bond and interest payments each year. Just to put in some context.
Yeah, actually, there's a, in the levy, the next agenda item, we have the levy section. I shared the presentation of last time. That has a slide that shows you what our debt service was for the last probably 10 years. So it does show you those numbers. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but yeah, the data is there for you.
All right. So shifting topics a little bit, but related, we wanted to share with you upcoming election dates because, again, statute indicates that there are restrictions on how frequently you as a board of education could go out to referendum for the district. So one kind of rule of thumb to keep in mind is that in even-numbered years, you have two opportunities. And in odd-numbered years, you have one opportunity to go to voters. So the next opportunity, coming up very quickly, is March 19th of 2024. We're certainly not suggesting that that's a reasonable approach today, but we wanted just to give you a sense that there is also a requirement for the board in any election opportunity. If you're going to go to referendum, you have to adopt a resolution to do that. And it's roughly 70 days or so before that election date. So for example, for the March 19th election next year, the board would have to adopt a resolution as soon as January 2nd. So it would be coming up pretty quickly. Then for the general election, which we know will be a big one, but November 5th of next year, the board would have to take action by August 19th. After that, April 1st of '25, which is a consolidated or school board election, you would have to make a decision as a board via a resolution by the middle of January of 2025. And there are certainly different schools of thought as to should it go in a general election, for example, versus a school board election. And happy to have a question or a conversation about that at any time. But in general, I'd say, school districts put questions on the ballot when they have the need. And if they can clearly communicate the need to the public and gauge that support and garner that support, then that's the best time to go. But it is also important to talk about the dates that are coming up. What else is going on in your community? Are there other taxing bodies perhaps putting questions on the ballot at any point? Should definitely have that conversation, but just wanted to make sure you saw some of the dates that are coming up over the next couple of years. And then at a high level, just wanted to show you, if hypothetically you as a board said, you know, we think we should be positioned to go out as soon as a year from now and ask the voters for permission, whether it's a DCEB referendum, for example, what might that look like? And one of the things that is definitely important is the concept of community engagement. Because boards of education and administration work so well and so hard at knowing what the needs are of the district. But that doesn't always mean that the community understands that or has that same discovery process that you might have. So one of the things that we do talk a lot with our school district clients about is engaging them some sort of process with the community, whether it's open houses or surveys, there's a lot of different ways you can achieve that to gain and get that awareness within the public. And ultimately, so that the board feels like the community has an understanding of what we're trying to do here, and we feel like we'd get some support at the ballot, so the board is in a position to take that vote. So we've just, at a very high level, laid out for you, really for November 5th of next year, you're at that point really now. If it's something you wanted to do, then that important community engagement work really should be getting underway here fairly soon, so that you'd have time as a board by the spring, probably that May timeframe, to really finalize a project scope. If you feel like you have an understanding of what the public might support, and then work toward June or July, finalizing ballot language, what would that, if you went for a DCEB referendum, for example, what is the right dollar amount and get to a place where you could adopt a resolution to put it on the ballot? And once you do that, you formally adopt that resolution, up till that point, you as a board can have as many conversations as you'd like about why a referendum may be needed, why it's important to pass it. But once a resolution is adopted to put it on the ballot, any conversations about advocacy for a referendum shift to a separate referendum campaign committee. You as a district, as board members, as administrators at the table, you can put out as much informational information as you want to, but anything that's advocating for the referendum has to shift to a committee. Which, again, we can dive more into that topic another time, but that's a pretty important date, just to kind of keep in the back of your mind how that shift occurs.
Can I pose one quick question? This is for Dan as much as anything. Assuming this type of timeline, we get the voters to agree on November 5th. When's the likely first project that these bonds would fund? When does that occur? 2025 or is it a 2026?
It depends on the, it depends on the year, because if you notice, there's also a year you have to put into there. So let's say you did November, hmm, let's say you did November 5th of 2024. Could you even realistically have something in a 2024 levy?
Yes.
But that would be a super, like the theoretically tightest timeline you could do, which means the 2024 levy, you started getting that money in the calendar year 2025. So that's the timeline you're talking about, when you'd start getting the money. So really, I would say the summer of 2025 would be the likely soonest you could do that under.
But that would be a tight timeframe.
It would be tight just in terms of the votes and then the levy having to be adopted by last Tuesday in December. Thank you. Last Tuesday in December. Thank you, class. So that's really what the timeline we're talking about. That would be really, really tight. But I guess what I don't know is from when the vote happens to when you can act, does it have to, didn't it need to be canvassed or something like that? I'm not sure how that works.
Typically, it's about 30 days after the election that you can sell the bonds. But so for an example of, if you pass a referendum in November of '24, you actually have until the end of February of '25 to sell bonds and impact the 2024 levy. You get a couple extra months. So you could, you could make that work.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And then does the DCEB accumulate? And then, so for example, if we were intending on using funds from DCEB to complete a larger scope project, would we need to wait for funds to accumulate in order to do a larger project?
So let's say, let's say you wanted to do a $10 million project and your DCEB was $2 million. Once you have the authority to have a DCEB of $2 million, that means, based on that math, roughly, you would have to borrow for five or six years to get $10 million. So you can borrow on future money that you're going to get. So you would sell bonds potentially right away. So we're going to sell for $10 million for six years, assuming interest and stuff. We're going to sell $10 million for six years and kind of know our payment, our annual payment is going to be $2 million a year. You'd get that money right away, very similar to a mortgage, like, right? I'm gonna, I want to buy this house now, and the bank says, okay, we'll give you the money now. And then you've got whatever 30, 15-year mortgage, similar, similar math.
No, that's okay. Here's a similar timeline for April of 2025. So if you're thinking, maybe we give ourselves a little bit more time in the process overall. To get to April of '25, you could begin the process in February of '24, which I also know is not that far away either. But just to try to give you, again, high-level view of what that timeframe might look like in giving yourself, particularly if you want to focus on the community engagement piece, give yourself ample time to do that, because that can take several months.
Nice. Good question. Newbie school finance person here. So if we were to establish a DCEB, and let's say it's $4 million, we want to do $12 million project, so we need to pay it off within three to five years or whatever to keep it under. So that $4 million DCEB cap is really going to be in addition to, in addition to the levy that we establish, plus $4 million. So each individual taxpayer is going to see a small percentage of whatever the tax levy is, plus whatever it costs us to pay that DCEB back annually.
Yes, that's a helpful clarification. So I want to be very clear. The options we are talking about is additional taxes from our community.
The only difference is if we establish a DCEB and we create these projects, we no longer have to go to the voters with every project. But we're still getting additional money dependent upon whatever we're borrowing. And it gives us the flexibility and kind of the ability, the flexibility to decide what kind of capital projects we want to make so long as our annual payments don't go past that DCEB to the maximum number of 20 years.
Yes. And there's, I want to get through all the slides because there's more context. I think there's a lot of, there's pros and cons of every, every decision. The reason why I think DCEB is probably the best path to go is because of several reasons that I think will be more apparent once we get through the rest of these slides. Particularly even what Tammy said earlier was, if you're going for a building bond referendum, in general, the most you can do is 20 years. I'm personally trying to not look at a 20-year fix. I would like to have a forever fix. Like, I'm not sure who of us are going to be here, not here, but like at District 128 in 20 years from now. I may or may not be. I don't know how old I am anymore, but I'm trying to set something up.
You will be.
There you go. I'm setting something up for long-term, long-term addressing this issue so that we don't, we don't get into a similar situation in the future. So.
Okay. A little more data we thought might be of interest to you and certainly may want to look at this at your leisure. But we provided a list for school districts in the Cook and Keller Counties who have gone to referenda either for building bonds or a DCEB referendum since November of 2020. So each district is listed, the date of the referendum, and the type of the referendum, the amount, and whether it passed or failed. So this just might be of interest to you. One thing that may jump out at you, we've highlighted in yellow on this slide, those are the two school districts that had DCEB-related referenda in the last few years. So in the case of Lindop School District 92 in Cook County, that was to establish a DCEB, and that one passed. Lamont High School District 210 in Cook and DuPage Counties had a DCEB, but just wanted to increase it. You can also go to the voters and ask to increase an existing DCEB, and that one did not pass. But this just might be of interest to you, particularly since there are some in Lake County and get a sense of some of the referenda recently. So as Dan mentioned, you can see the Lake Forest High School District 115, one listed there for $105.7 million that passed. Mundeline High School District 120's last spring for $175 million did not pass.
Sorry, Jim, about Fenton being listed, but that is the data.
It's okay.
All right. I know Dan has shared this information with you before, a list of projects for prioritization. So I believe this is a pretty current list, and it totals there on the right-hand side. You can see that just over $45 million. But just wanted to give that context because I think as Dan aptly said, the thought process is, these aren't the only things that you're going to need to finance, right? These are the things that are more imminent, but all school districts continue to have facilities needs over time. They're just aging buildings like our homes age, and we have to continue to maintain them. So the concept here is to give you a tool potentially that enables you to keep addressing those items into the future. Okay. So before we look at just a quick market, bond market overview and a couple scenarios, we did want to talk a little bit about the concept of the IRS and their spend-down requirements. So when you, as a school district, sell bonds for capital projects, you will sell them on a federally tax-exempt basis. So that means, thank you. That's all right. That means that you get a benefit or a privilege from the IRS because investors who buy your bonds do not have to pay income taxes on a federal basis on their interest earnings on their investment in the school district. So the federal government doesn't love that because they don't make money on that transaction. If you sell taxable bonds, then they would, but you don't want to do that because taxable rates, of course, are higher than tax-exempt bond rates. So with that privilege, if you're going to sell tax-exempt bonds for a project, at the time you close on that bond issue, you get your money, it's wired to the district's account. At that point, the Board of Education, the administration have to satisfy a couple of reasonable expectation tests for the IRS. And the first one says that within six months after you receive those dollars, you have to have a reasonable expectation to spend or contractually obligate to spend at least 5% of the proceeds within six months. That's usually a pretty easy target to hit because you can include things like professional services, like architect fees. That's very, very common. The other benchmark is that 85% one that's listed there. So you have to have a reasonable expectation to spend at least 85% of the proceeds within three years. So most school districts, when they're selling tax-exempt bonds, they're very mindful. We need to try to spend all of these proceeds within three years. Now, again, it's a reasonable expectation test because the IRS knows things can happen that are outside of your control. COVID is an example of supply chain challenges and steel delivery delays, all sorts of things that were out of control, out of the control of a school district. So they understand that. And this is a point where you might say, okay, what happens then in that example? What if I have 50% of the bond proceeds left at three years because we had all sorts of extenuating circumstances, weather delays, whatever it might be? Well, at that point, what you would have to do is invest the proceeds in a list of restricted types of investments, and you'd be yield restricted on your investment. So they'd have to be earmarked and put aside, but you would be expected as a board to continue to spend proceeds as diligently as you can. Okay? So that's just an important thing to keep at the back of our mind when we look at these scenarios here in a minute. So as we have discussed various sources of funds for your capital projects, we just wanted to list these here briefly. Fund balance, I understand from a lot of work that you've done, and I know you've been a very strong district financially for a very, very long time and been very diligent in the use of fund balance for other projects over the years. But at this point, there may be a comfort level for spending up to almost $16 million of fund balance towards a project. We would also consider referendum bond proceeds as one of the examples, but then non-referendum bond proceeds upon a successful DCEB referendum. So we're going to look at a couple of those scenarios here in a minute. Before we do that, I do want to talk with you a little bit about the bond market. I know, again, it's not imminent that you would be in the bond market anytime soon, but just wanted to give you an idea of where things are right now. So I know there's a lot happening on this graph, but the gray shaded area is showing you what the Fed has done with short-term interest rates. And this goes back about 20 years. So you can see the peaks and valleys by the Fed. And along with that, you'll see different colored lines there. Those represent points on the yield curve for what's called the Municipal Market Data Index, or the MMD for short. It's kind of like the Dow Jones Industrial of the tax-exempt bond market. So PMA, we watch this index every single day. We're very interested in what the trends are. We get updates throughout the day. And as you can imagine, there's different news that comes out that can impact it at 9:00 AM, that it can change by 2:00 o'clock, not unlike other markets that people watch. And there's a story behind every peak and valley on this graph too, in terms of the MMD. And there's two highlighted on the right-hand side of the page, which you can see with COVID and inflation. So this is same data, just a shorter-term view, because I know it's a lot easier to distinguish here what's been happening more recently. So we look at the left-hand side, just to give you some context, that spike right there, March of 2020, you can guess what that was? COVID. And for about three or four weeks, things were extremely volatile in all the markets, but it was no different for the tax-exempt bond market. But things recovered pretty quickly and pretty drastically because the Fed put money out there, right, with ESAR funds. They were doing things to try to stimulate the economy. And for the latter half of 2020 and virtually all of 2021, we had historically low rates in the tax-exempt bond market. Then we got to January of '22, and we all know concerns at that point were really growing about inflation. And the bond market was responding as the Fed was moving short-term interest rates as well. A lot of people think that the only thing that influences the tax-exempt bond market is what the Fed does with short-term interest rates. That is absolutely true on the shorter end of the yield curve. A one-year bond, maybe even a five-year bond, when you get out longer, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, there are lots of other variables at play. So we're on the right-hand side of the graph now, and you can see in 2023, it's been somewhat volatile. Not extreme volatility like we had in 2022 in general, but we've had some ups and downs. So why is that? So the main reason is, the tax-exempt bond market is not convinced that the Fed has things under control when it comes to inflation. And I'm sure that's not a surprising statement to any of you because we all live it in different ways. But the bond market is really waiting to hear, you know, what is the Fed going to do? They've talked lately about, well, maybe we're going to pause on raising the rate again in 2023. Maybe we'll do it one more time. But more importantly, what they're saying now is we may be more patient in terms of when we start to lower interest rates, which is making the bond market a little bit more anxious. There is no question that what is happening in the Middle East is also causing some There is no question that what is happening in the Middle East is also causing some anxiety in the market, but for sure, the main driver of some of that volatility that you see is the concerns about ongoing inflation. And keep in mind, I'll go back here. I had this red line going across, just looking at the 10-year. The average for the 10-year MMD since 2003 was a little over 2.5%. As of October 27th, when we presented or prepared this graph, it was about a 360. I was looking at rates earlier this afternoon, and that current 10-year is now down to about a 340. We have had some recovery in the last week or so, which has been nice. But we got really so spoiled in '20 and '21, and, and yes, rates are higher and they are above the average, but they are still, from an historical perspective, they are not so out of whack, uh, relative to history. I do anticipate rates are going to stabilize and hopefully start to come down. Whether it's the latter half of '24 or early '25 remains to be seen, and I don't have a crystal ball. But it's, it's important to just keep in mind where we've been and, and just coming out of, of an interesting situation from COVID. Okay? Yep, yeah.
Uh, I think this slide is helpful also to show, um, if you look at the different colors, those are like how long you're borrowing the money for. The longer you borrow the money, the higher the interest you pay. The shorter you borrow the money, the, the less interest you pay because the investors are going to expect more because they're tying up their money for longer periods of time. Same on our end, we usually, other than now, usually we invest in multi-year CDs. We, we had a five-year ladder going for a while because that was how we could get better yields because we tie up our money for longer periods of time, we would get better yields. That's how it normally works. The short term is, it's a little thrown off right now, but in general, that's how it usually works.
We have a little bit of an inversion in the yield curve on the short end. That is true. Okay, so we do have a couple scenarios to show you, just really more for comparison sake, as, as Dan mentioned. So this scenario is looking at a $100 million building bond referendum in November of '24 with a 20-year payback. So we used current market rates as of a couple weeks ago. And what we're trying to show you here, so the, the light blue column shaded in the, sort of the middle of the page is showing you if you borrowed at current rates over 20 years, your average annual debt service payment would be about 8.5 million dollars, totaling principal and interest for about $165 million over that period of time. Based on the district's equalized assessed value, its current EAV, so being conservative there as well, because presumably your EAV is going to go up over the next couple of years. But conservatively, that would increase the tax rate. You don't have a bond and interest tax rate now. It would establish one. It would be about a 26 cent increase in the tax rate. So again, that would be added to the existing tax rate of the district. And just to give you some context, for a $400,000 market value home, that would increase property taxes in the first year by about $325. So this is borrowing all 100 million at once. Let me caveat that. You might not borrow it all in one bond issue. You might do it over a couple of years, just because 100 million is a lot of work, and your construction team needs to be able to satisfy, help you satisfy that IRS spend down reasonable expectation test I talked about. So you may sell the bonds over a couple of years, but in general, you're going to do a significant amount of projects relatively soon. Okay? And this is just a bar graph showing you what those annual debt service payments are at about 8.6 million per year. So this is where we start to compare against a DCEB referendum. So ultimately trying to get to the same point to fund 100 million dollars of work, but over a longer period of time, because now you'd have this mechanism in place to be able to do that. So in this, this case, you go to the voters and you ask for a DCEB, and it would be about 5.7 million dollars because that amount at current interest rates would enable you to borrow 25 million dollars every five years. So when you look at this in isolation, this would be just the first issue. So what you can see, again, the light blue shaded column, about 5.7 million per year totaling at the bottom about 28.4 million in principal and interest over the five years. And on the right-hand side, that tax rate increase instead of 26 cents is about 17 cents. So the impact on that $400,000 market value home is about $217. So it's a smaller impact. And this is just, again, a bar graph. The red line is showing you that's where your DCEB would be. So when you have a DCEB, again, you have to live within that DCEB unless you have the type of DCEB where it increases by the CPI annually in that example I mentioned earlier. But in general, you need to make sure your payments fall within the DCEB. So this is extrapolating that DCEB now and saying, okay, 100 million dollars of work, we wouldn't necessarily do it as quickly as we would with a building bond referendum question, but we would get to all that work. We would sell 25 million every five years, so we'd have bond issues 25, 30, 35, and 40. Over time, what you can see is that, is that the red? There it is. Okay. This now is about 113 and a half million versus the 165 million. So one of the benefits that I know Dan likes, not speaking for Dan, but minimizing, again, that interest cost. This is another thing to be mindful of. And as I mentioned, again, that increase is still that roughly $217 on that $400,000 market value home. So you're getting to the same place in terms of how much you borrow. You're not getting the funds as quickly, but time value of money, not borrowing at all at once or as, as soon, your interest cost would be smaller over time. Okay? And then here's just the, the graph of that same information. So just the different colors represent each bond issue every five years fitting within that 5.7 million dollar DCEB. Okay? And here's a summary page, which we thought might, might be helpful. So this is the building bond scenario. All 100 million we're saying here in this scenario, all of it in 2025. And then the DCEB, you can see the four issues every five years, getting you to the same total amount of proceeds. Here's what that estimated average annual debt service payment would be in each scenario as we talked about. Here's the difference in the debt service. It's about a $52 million difference in debt service. The tax levy impact in terms of the rate is estimated here, and then the impact on, on a $400,000 market value home. If you structured the bonds, whether you passed a DCEB referendum or a building bond referendum, if you determined you wanted to wait to impact the 2025 tax levy, although you could go to 24 like we were talking about a few minutes ago, but if you went with 25, that would impact tax bills payable in calendar year 2026. Yep.
This, this is the 100 million dollar slide. When I'm thinking through uh, ability to access funding to do the projects we want to do, I think you can see the difference between a DCEB and a building bond. Borrowing the money in shorter chunks allows you to have a much lower interest rate and is a massive savings for taxpayers, in my opinion, over the life of that. You're talking, what was the number of difference? You said you did the math. $50 million of savings in that. I, I think that that is, that is the best path forward, um, to give you access to funding projects that, so, uh, under those numbers, that's about 25 million every five years you could do. So you could do call, think of it $25 million worth of projects every five years. Now, you can do it every three year. We had all kinds of scenarios going up, three years, five years, 10 years, whatever, and I, 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 I truly felt five was a better balance, uh, because it, to be honest, it takes three years to do any project. Like from initial conception to execution, it's done, it takes three years to do. So even a three-year timeline would be a little stressful. I think, I think five years is a nice balance in terms of, of that process. And you can see even like the impact on, um, the the $400,000 home of $218 versus 326. So it significantly, uh, lower for them. And the DCEB in my mind, um, is as close to a forever fix as you can get. I think the true forever fix is you set a DCEB at a, at a, at a real rate that increases with CPI. That is the true, in my opinion, forever fix. There's a lot of, there's a lot of considerations to go into all of these things, but that's what I'm telling you is your ability to, uh, access funding that will give you the funding to do the types of projects that you've been wanting to do, that we've, we've seen and the projects that we have not yet seen. And so I think the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the different options, what you're trying to look at. Thank you.
Well said. So, uh, lots of information. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all tonight. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, but in terms of things you might want to think about as a board going forward. Uh, again, we know you have that list of, of projects for prioritization. But thinking about a community engagement firm, and there are a few different firms out there that work with school districts in Illinois and help them set up that community engagement plan, that program, that might be something that may be very, very helpful to the district. And once you've gone through that process, because again, you may have a real strong sense of what exactly the dollar amount should look like for a DCEB referendum, or exactly the scope of projects that you want to contemplate may be, but going through that process enables you to get that feedback. And once you get that feedback, then you can refine what that referendum type should be. If it's a DCEB referendum, how much should it be for? And what's question are we going to go with? Which ballot date are we going to go with? What does that timeline look like? That will inform a lot of those important decisions that you as a board would need to make. And I will not read the disclosure language to you.
Oh, darn. Uh, just a couple of comments. If my calculation's correct, at $218 or whatever, we're talking about somewhere between a 2 and 3% increase in the first year of that person's average tax bill. But it, it just, that's it. You know, there won't be an additional one.
Right.
So just to put that into a bit of context, so a few percentage additional. The other thing that I'm thinking about when we look at this versus traditional, you know, bond go out to referendum, build a building, whatever it is. A lot of districts will use this process where they'll, they'll borrow 100 million dollars, they'll build something. And when that gets ready to be paid off 20 years later, they'll go out to referendum again and say, we're not going to raise your taxes. We're not going to lower your taxes, but we're not going to raise your taxes. And so they get another 100 million or whatever, and it goes out 20 years. The problem with that is not every time do you need a big, big project. You need these medium-sized projects that are too big for your operating budget to, to fund, but too large for really a, a, a full-blown, uh, bond referendum type of building referendum type of, type of process. So I think that once you're, you're sort of reasonably stable in terms of your student population, the size of your district, this makes, in my mind, far more sense than, you know, the, the, the other or any other alternative to do that. I, it's just my, my comment.
So the individual payment to the tech, that I guess I'm not understanding, so the $218 under the DCEB is a one-time payment? It's not, it's annual. I mean, it's in perpetuity.
But it's a, it's a one-time increase. It doesn't increase another 2% and another 2%. And then once you increase, then you're there. Your new payment is here.
Under, under this scenario, which is a, which is a fixed DCEB, it would go up 218, and it might change based on the tax, based on the, the EAV change because
Right. I mean, so the reality is our taxpayers are going to see an increase based on their market rate, you know, based on their market value increasing, and we are going to be asking for an additional $218 every year.
No, no, the same 218. Once you raise it.
It'll vary, but it, in theory, under this scenario, a fixed $5 million-ish DCEB, it'll be around 218 for a market, market value $400,000 home. It'll vary mathematically, it'll vary. It might be up to 230 one year, it might be down to 200 one year, depending on the change in EAVs, but it'll always, it'll always kind of be around 200-ish.
From a selling point, though, we're not asking for 100 million dollars. We're asking for far less than that. We have 47 million dollars worth of capital projects, of which we've already allocated 14 million or more because we have two projects that we're looking at. So that 47 million is much lower already. So I, I don't see us borrowing 100 million dollars anytime soon.
The point of the 100 million was to just illustrate the two different options and how
Right.
and why I think the DCEB is a more cost-effective
Right.
way to do that. But you're right, there's a lot of work to do to figure out what is the right number. The list that we have right now, that was the list that we had when we asked last time.
Right.
The next time we ask, we'll probably have a different list.
Right. But that's the beauty of this, is that we can continue to borrow as needed. We don't have to ask for
Up to that.
100 million.
Up to that cap.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
It, it is a great relief to me that there is a, um, reasonable option for doing those medium-sized projects that we require. This beloved building that we're sitting in was built a long time ago. And it needs new science labs. And it deserves a STEAM lab, like the one that we have at Vernon Hills High School. And with our current balance and redoing this cafeteria, I worry all the time about how we are going to take care of our aging infrastructure. That, that is a real obligation. And things like science labs and STEAM labs have a direct impact on student learning. And I'm still thinking through everything that was presented tonight, but, but it is a, a relief to know that we do have a mechanism that's not a major bond referendum, which we don't need, that we could, um, engage with the community and get feedback and solicit.
And it's a recommendation that it appears Dan can get behind.
I believe you're right.
Huge.
Like if he says this is an okay thing to be doing, that takes a lot of, uh, worry away.
Well, and what I'm hearing is it doesn't just take worry away. It is really a permanent solution for making sure with the way public schools are funded. We know that in perpetuity, we have a mechanism to take care of our infrastructure. And, and I think that, that's something really worth noting.
I, I think one of the uniqueness of the role of us at this table is to, um, not think small picture or short term. Every area of our organization, however you get far, they have their portion of this district that they need to focus on, and we need them to do that. As you grow in levels in our district, we have a broader scope to do. When you get here, we're not even talking about just the whole district. We need to think about the whole district over 50 years because the things we do now will affect this district 50 years from now. The decisions that were made 50 years ago are affecting us now. And so, um, I truly believe if, to access funding, I think this is the best way to do it, to give you that access at the best cost-effective balance to the taxpayer. I, the worst thing I would want is to pay 50 million dollars in interest when there was another way. You could have avoided it.
So hypothetically, if we were to borrow, and I, I thought the same thing as Don, you know, we're not talking about 100,000 dollars. So, um, but if we were to make an initial bond issue and pay that off in the five years and be in a position where we don't need to issue another series of five years, then that money would come off the taxpayer's tax bill, right?
Right.
As long as the bonds are paid. So it's, this is a, this is kind of a trust relationship we're asking.
It is, and, and, uh, that, that is something that you'd have to develop because there will be people that'll say, you'll always find something to spend the money on. But, and that, that, that still remains to be seen. But I think this is the best path that gives you access to that funding without having to go ask for it for every single project. So what Jim said, like, these kind of projects are, they're too much for any operating budget to handle on themselves, but they're not quite too big. Or they're not quite too, they're a little too small to get a 20-year, to borrow money over 20 years to be for them to do it.
Other comments, questions? What's our next step here?
Well. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Uh, well, the, the next steps are, I guess, what do you want to do? If you want to take the next step down this path, it would be doing that, consider an engagement firm and start talking about types and timelines.
And those are consecutive things, not concurrent? Right?
Your mic.
Not necessarily.
Bring your mic down.
Oh, sorry.
And those are consecutive things, or are they concurrent?
The, both. Because during that community engagement process, you're going to get a lot of information to help inform the decision about referendum type, what timeline you should go with. So that's going to help you make those decisions, but we will approach it sequentially. Like, we need to do some of the community engagement first. But you're going to be getting feedback along the way as to how that's going and, and what the best approach might be as it's happening.
We're, go ahead. And I will say that the community engagement piece is important to even determine if we, this is the path we want. this is the path we want to take. So I think it's, you know, not, we shouldn't downplay that, being able to get some feedback from our community to make sure, and as was mentioned before, this type of referendum is very different than what they're accustomed to hearing about. So there's also some back and forth, too. While we want to get information from the community, we also want to start putting that information out that there are other ways to fund what we do and how we construct things. So I think it's, you know, like you say, it's, they're sort of about the same time, but one, the engagement definitely will inform the decisions on referendum type, planning, timelines, that kind of thing.
And I may add, if you think there is a chance you might want to go in November of '24, then you would probably want to move pretty quickly and talking to some community engagement firms, like I said, because that timeline is moving along quickly.
We are not voting right now, but I'm happy to say I'd rather move forward quickly. I'm ready for a steam lab, I'm ready for new science labs. I think that's something that we can sell the community.
Anyone have any objections to having the administration start looking at options for a firm to help us with the community engagement, that type of thing? I think that's where we start. Okay?
No objection.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a lot of information, but nicely done.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, really nicely done.
I learned something.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
My pleasure.
Okay, moving on, more Dan. We have the 2023 tax levy.
Yes, we have the 2023 tax levy. There's, I have the, what is different from last time is I have the resolutions there for you now to see with real numbers in there. We had real numbers last time, but now we have the resolutions for you. This would be looking at for our meeting a week from today, our board meeting, that I look to adopt the levy. It is due by the last Tuesday in December. I always recommend doing it in November, because it gives us an extra month, because I have, just in case we can't get a quorum for some reason, it gives us extra time, because there is no deadline past the last Tuesday in December to file this. The numbers are exactly the same, so as a big-picture view, what I'm recommending is that we are asking for a 5.99% increase. I think we will be capped at actually 5.56, based on how the state law works with it. We have, the levy hearing was noticed, it was in the paper in the right timeline, and that will be right at the beginning of our meeting on Monday is the tax levy hearing and then adopting, recommended for adoption at the same board meeting. So same number, same data is there. I pasted the presentation from last time, so you have that for reference as well. I don't have anything to add.
Any questions, comments?
No.
Okay, then let's move on. Park Avenue Properties.
Yeah, so I'm just going to introduce this and then I'll pass it on to Mr. Kelly. It was requested that we look at, or it was asked about, what was the history, the status of the Park Avenue properties that we had? And so to the fair point of, some of this stuff has been, has a few years on it now in terms of history, and so it would be helpful to get the history. So Brian and I talked, he's going to walk you through some history. One of the things I wanted to share that's in your packet is an aerial view, so you can see those properties and what are the properties the district owns. So the ones that are in the boxes, that's properties that we own. There's still, if you'll notice, a piece of property that we do not own right now. So at this point, right?
Yeah, so a little history. The last time that we actually...
Oh, uh, it's in the pack. It's in the pack. I was, I'm not sure why I opened it, but yeah, I don't, it's not shared.
So the last time we actually looked at this property combined with other properties that Libertyville was in July of 2014. And part of the reason was, at that time, we were still looking at the Brainerd campus. The Brainerd building was still there. That's when discussions about the LHS pool started, parking discussions, and, you know, looking at the current tennis courts, and just kind of looking at overall view of possibly what could happen with the property out front, where really it's kind of open land right now. Could that be utilized along with the pool and the property across street and the tennis courts in Brainerd? So when that was kind of done, one of the initial thoughts of the property across the street, when I look at the property across the street, at that time, we had the nursery property, which was the old nursery for people that have been around town for a long time. We owned the property on the corner, that's open fields. There is a blue house that we, somebody lives there. At that time, we acquired another house right next to the blue house, which was owned by the Grahams. And there's a couple other, there's actually two lots connected to that house that was torn down. There's another empty lot. And then we started approaching and looking at discussions about buying any of those houses. And then that's when we obtained the last two houses that we purchased from Strample, which was a purchase plus a leaseback. And then they lived there for a while, and then we finally now own the property. I know Mark Koopman and his team, they're looking at, you know, the property and tearing down the houses, looking at the overall quality of the property. But one of the things that we looked at is what can be done with that property? If you look at Libertyville High School's campus, there are only six tennis courts on campus. They utilize tennis courts down Libertyville Courts, and some of their players are bussed down to other tennis courts in Libertyville, and there are not many, there are not many tennis courts in Libertyville. So one option was, could you use the property across the street for tennis courts? You also, you know, don't have as many fields in Libertyville, and the athletics teams are going to Canterbury, they're going to District 70 property, which is down on Diamond, that open property is actually owned by District 70. We utilize that. We utilize Butterfield property for practices. And then we use Adler for cross-country. Dowden was used for baseball, but with the changes in Dowden, baseball is going to be pushed up a little bit more to Butler, because there's only one baseball on campus. That was one of the reasons why Brainerd actually turned into a turf field, was the ability to be able to use that a lot more than having grass. But looking at the property across the street, the way it is laid out, it's actually deeper almost at the corner of Diamond and 176, back to the path. So there's a bike path back there. And then it's, it kind of, it's kind of an odd shape, it's not exactly square, because 176 doesn't run straight with the pieces of property. But one of the thoughts was to put tennis courts on the corner and then have open field, practice fields, basically the rest of the way, all the way to 911. Obviously, still, the problem with it right now is that in order to expand your tennis courts across the street, you need that other house that's sitting there. So that's why nothing's really been done across the way, is it would, the thought of the board at the time was to be able to get all that property and then be able to put in tennis courts possibly, plus field. There was talk about parking, but when the pool got built, we were able to actually expand the parking along the west side of the property. There's a little parking lot there, there's pool, parking right by the pool, and then parking all along the fence line. And that was not really in the original scope, but we were able to get an extra little parking lot in there. What? Yeah, so the tennis courts would be, you know, really the Diamond and 176. That you could put possibly 10 to 12 tennis courts in there. Vernon Hills has 10 courts. 12 is the magic number, really. I don't know what the history of why there is only 10, but 12 in Illinois, it allows you for doubles and singles. And put some little parking over there for people for tennis. They could still be utilized, you know, for, if you wanted, for physical welfare classes, that they could cross the street. There is a crossing light there, so you could cross and use those for tennis courts, take the other tennis courts and put them in a parking if the village allows. I don't, you know, you don't know all the history of it, because can it, can that be done? It is impervious surface already, but could you put in more parking on campus there? Or you leave those tennis courts and then you have more across the street. So...
So those two properties, do they, it looks like they're not contiguous, they're not connected.
So the one in the middle is that there is a blue house there?
In between the two red square.
Yes.
And we've made overtures to, to them to try and buy that property.
Many times.
It's, the last time was probably maybe five years ago, maybe, or... Okay. Rick Mittelman. So...
Rick.
Yeah. Yeah, so there is, if you look, there is a house right in the middle of that, so...
And do we know what the current value of those properties are? Because they're assets that the district owns.
Yeah, I mean, there's an assessed value, but it's not taxed, they're tax-free, we don't pay tax on them. So right now, they're, well, the properties to the west are essentially vacant land. And so that would, there's an assessed value that's assigned by the...
I'm talking about a fair market value.
Well, I mean, in theory...
Like, if we were going to consider it an asset that we would sell?
You would get it appraised at that point, if you would. So the assessor does assign a value, an assessed value, which then you just multiply by three and you have the fair market value. But I'm not sure that that would be a precise number in terms of what the, what the potential fair market value would be when you actually went to sell it.
And I'm not suggesting that we should sell it. I'm just wondering if we did, what the value of the properties would be.
I'm sorry, interrupt to do. I mean, we've been waiting for several years for our middle lot, and it seems like we can't do anything. This is not usable property if we don't have a contiguous usage, right? So...
Well, I think the original thinking in the acquisitions was, LHS is landlocked.
It's a long game.
It, exactly. It is a long game. I don't think we had any illusions that the blue house in the middle would become ours in the near future. It was made very clear by the owners that they had no intent of selling. And although the attorney that Dan referred to, who retired, made several overtures and asked if they did change their mind to reach out to us, there's no guarantee that that would happen. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yeah. And so obviously, we've been, you know, District 128 in Libertyville has been using the property on the corner quite a bit. And so if we're able to, you know, look at 911 through to the blue house, you know, to turn that into, you know, practice fields and usable fields, because the end game would be is fields over there plus maybe tennis courts where the current field is. So then, you know, that's what I would, you know, start with at least, and that's kind of what we did with the corner. And then, you know, you probably are taking another team of, during the springtime, not traveling maybe to Canterbury, or not traveling to Diamond, or not traveling to, you know, Butterfield and keeping the, you know, the students closer and usable.
When we had last done an appraisal, when we were looking at 911 and 915, I believe like with the, the value of the lot was probably a few hundred thousand for each lot. So if like you walked down, looked down the line, like look closer at each kind of lot there, you're probably talking about a fair market value, maybe a couple million would be my guess.
And again, my question is not because I think we should sell these properties, it's that because it's a long game, the longer we hold on to them, the more valuable they become in the event that we decide it doesn't serve student needs. But right now, it looks like there is a legitimate, I mean, if it's tennis courts, it's a curricular and an extracurricular need that it serves, right?
But I think I'm hearing that we're not going to pursue tennis courts as long as we don't have the entire land, right?
When the, when, at the time, STR, you know, kind of looked at the lot and the size, you would need that extra house to be able to, you know, if you're going to do it right...
Do everything.
You know, like you said, it's a long game. If you're going to do it right, you would want that. But in the interim, you know, you could take the property from 911 up to the house and, you know, once we get those other houses down, we can clear the land, and now you actually have almost as much space as the other one and usable for your students.
And I'm hearing there's enough, there's enough need to...
Soccer use that land?
Soccer, possibly lacrosse or something, you know, you could look at.
Strip the field.
Because we have teams right now going off-campus.
Yes.
Be able to practice and that kind of thing. So there is a need.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks for the update. Back to my agenda here. So that was the items for discussion. Any future agenda items anyone wishes to propose? We have a list of things that'll be coming up. Okay. Hearing done. I call the facilities and finance adjourned.
Yay.
Thank you, everyone. And congratulations, Middle Ash.
Thank you.
Welcome.